Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one Public Board of Education meeting. We will call the meeting to order after we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We're a little out of sequence, so the meeting is now called to order, and we will have a roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Ms. Belko. Ms. Belko.
Here, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Bierman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarilla.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky. Mr. Nikotinsky.
I guess he's telling us he's muted.
Skip Mr. Nikotinsky for now. Mr. Polori.
Present.
Mr. Retsky.
Here.
Ms. Siegel.
Here.
Ms. Skirby. Ms. Skirby, unmuted.
She's not on, apparently, there's.
Two people, they can't unmute.
Yeah. Mr. Pulcinelli, Mr. Nikotinsky, and Ms. Skirby are unable to unmute.
Ms. Skirby's actually muted. If you could unmute.
She said she can't.
She can't.
Her picture shows that she's unmuted on her side, but.
Mr. Tofano.
You're on, oh, there we go.
All right, there we go.
That was Ms. Skirby.
Yes, yep.
Mr. Tofano.
I'm here, too.
Mr. Nikotinsky. And that was Mr. Tofano. Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Okay.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting being published. An electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one at all schools on the district website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash www.monroe.k12 nj.us backslash home news, Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. Instructions for making a public comment. To make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. When you are called on to speak during public forum, your microphone status will be set to unmute. Please do not attempt to unmute yourself, as this may cause your microphone to stay muted. When called upon, you will be given the option to share your device's camera with the rest of the panelists and attendees during your speaking time. If you choose to do this, simply click the video camera icon and inform Mr. Pulcinelli as he sets you up for public forum. After you are unmuted, please state your name and address for the record. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to four minutes duration or less in accordance with Board Bylaw zero one six seven. After you are finished speaking, you will be muted and your permission to share your camera will be disabled. Please kindly turn the raise hand feature off when your speaking has concluded. Thank you.
Mr. Gorski and Mr. Pulcinelli, at one point, we had, if people were having trouble getting in, that there was a phone number to be called. Do we have that feature this evening? Mr. Pulcinelli.
Mr. Pulcinelli, were you provided that phone number? Otherwise, I'll contact Mr. Feldman now, who set it up last meeting, and I'll.
I had it running. I'll post it right now, real quick.
And then if we need it again, that's great. Okay, before we begin, the next order of business would be approval of the minutes. What I'd like to do is to, once again, welcome our student board members. We finally have some student board members participating, and we're very delighted for that. We have Kaylee Carver. Correct? Kaylee, wave to us. There we go. That's Kaylee. And we have Samara Jane. Please say hello. Thank you. We all welcome you, and we're happy you're here. Okay. Next order of business is approval of the minutes. We first have the Board of Education organizational meeting in January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is that our first one, Mr. Gorski?
Yes, ma'am.
Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone have any additions, suggestions, deletions, anything on that? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes? Just raise your hand. Okay.
Second.
Belko and Mr. Tofano seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Recuse or abstain? Okay, Mr. Gorski.
Thank you. Next is closed session meeting, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. I may have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Tofano and Chrissy Skirby, seconds. Any additions, corrections? Comments? Seeing none? Mr. Gorski, I guess?
Then we're up to Public Board of Education meeting, January twenty.
Do we all approve it? Okay, yes. All right, by aye. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Gorski, I didn't get the right.
No, no abstentions or recusals so far.
Right.
Public Board of Education meeting minutes, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Peter Tofano, second, with Chrissy Skirby. Any revisions, corrections, additions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any abstentions, recusals? Or no's? Okay, seeing none. And the last one is the closed session meeting minutes in January twenty twenty twenty-one, Mr. Gorski.
Motion.
Mr. Tofano, Karen Bierman, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any stensions, recusals, any no's? Nope. Okay, Mr. Gorski, I think we're all set with those.
Thank you.
May, would, let's see, we have our next student board member report. Who would like to begin? Okay, Kaylee? You have the floor. Unmute yourself.
She said she can't.
She cannot. Mr. Pulcinelli, could we unmute Ms. Carver? Craver, I'm sorry. Now, if she can't, we're all in trouble. Okay.
It's actually, she'd be good.
There we go.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Craver, the senior student representative. What has happened in this past month is Barclaybrook slash the Brookside PTA is hosting the Harlem Wizards fundraiser and a virtual paint night. They're also looking for volunteers to help create presentations for their upcoming virtual cultural fair. Barclaybrook organized a Valentine's Day card drive. Their students were given templates that they personalized into cards, and then those cards were delivered to local assisted living facilities. Woodland is celebrating Black History Month by coloring and creating their own panel of a of a banner to hang on the walls of Woodland to honor the accomplishments of African Americans. Their E, their PE teacher, Mr. Schultz, has coordinated an optional challenge for their students to count their steps, which will make them virtually walk to Camden Aquarium. Mill Lake also organized the Valentine's Day Card Project, where they made and collected cards for those assisted living facilities. Their third grade student council and two of the first grade class organized a sock drive. Apple Guards' fifth grade student council representatives are reading books to their fourth grade classes about the achievements of African American month, African Americans to celebrate Black History Month. This week, each classroom is celebrating Random Week of Kindness and completing a bingo board of kind activities. They're also gathering donations for McFood until the end of March.
Okay, I would just keep it, keep you unmuted. I would just like to, if you care to take a few minutes, I know I'm putting you on the spot. If you care to take a few minutes and just give us a little pulse about how your, your class is doing in these times, if you have anything you'd like to share with us.
I would say the classes are going fairly well. Hybrid has been working really well. I'm a hybrid student, and the transition has been nice to go into the hybrid zone.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Samara, may I ask you to give your report?
Hi, I'm Samara Jane. I'm the junior student board representative. This month, Oak Tree started their virtual fundraising of Jump Rope for Heart yesterday for the American Heart Association. Their PTA has also set up a little library in front of their building where students will be able to exchange books. At the middle school, acclaimed author and award-winning producer J.C. Poehl of Teen Truth came and talked to the students about five group ways to help build self-efficiency and resilience. Their guidance counselors are also doing a character pillar shout-out, where students have the months to investigate which of their peers are showing this pillar of the month, and then they will come to their office hours on the last Monday of the month to share out what they noticed. At the high school, the Ro Kappa History Honor Society is celebrating Black History Month by spotlighting famous New Jersey African Americans. The Environmental Action Club created a podcast available on Spotify, Apple, and Google Podcasts, Anchor, and Radio Public, called Every Action Counts. The Science National Honor Society held a guest speaker, Dr. Mike, which was open to the entire school yesterday, where he discussed his journey to become a doctor and offered advice to those thinking about the field.
Okay, and Samara, I would also, if you choose to, again, you're on the spot, just to give us a little idea of how your class is doing and say whatever you like.
So I'm a fully remote student, which, you know, like Kaylee said, has been going fairly well. I think it was good that we were given the option to vote on whether we wanted the after-school hours to be mandatory or not, so.
And how is that working out?
I think it's good because, you know, the after-school sessions are more personalized, because there's not a lot of people there. So when you really need the extra help, you can go to your teachers, and they can probably help you one-on-one more so than.
And how are you getting feedback from your peers? As, as a representative of the student body?
A little bit. I'm getting a lot of questions about prom, more so than other topics, but.
We're probably gonna need to talk about that very soon. So for the two of you, I would task you for next month to, if your peers reach out to you and you want to say a few words, just like this, doesn't have to be long or a big story, please feel free to, you know, say something like that for next year. We want, we want to hear from you. We're here for you. So without your input, we can't improve things if, if necessary. But if things are working out, we'd like to hear that as well. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, the next order of business, Mr. Gorski, keep me on the right path, is the presentation of the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Did you want to say a few words before we turn it over to Mr. Stankiewicz? Unmute, please.
That's twice tonight. Appreciate that, but Mr. Stankiewicz needs no introduction, so if you don't mind, just turn the floor over to him for his presentation to the board.
And I'm, and I'm never short on words. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, which, Mr. Gorski, and student representatives. I am the independent auditor for the Board of Education for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. My job, my firm, we are appointed by the Board of Education to independently audit the records of the operation of the financial operation of the district for the fiscal year July one nineteen through June thirtieth of twenty. We are appointed by the board. We answer to the board in the end, and we report to the board the result of audit. Now, I do want to say your audit was the first one that I issued. It was in advance of the deadline. We are always out in front when it comes to Monroe, and we try to make sure that your audit gets done first. It serves as the foundation for what we do. And I do want to point out, we kind of think we do a pretty good job, and quite frankly, at, at pretty favorable rates, okay? However, the audit work starts in the previous October. We audit the ASSA. We have an arrangement with the board that we pre-audite the ASSA before it gets submitted by the administration. Okay, now, for those of you who are new to this, we do an independent financial audit. We also test for what's called compliance issues, certain things that the board is required to do. Okay? So, again, the audit is financial, and as part of that, we run samples. Auditing is a sample. Audition, we run samples of various transactions. We run samples of various revenue sources. When we talk about transactions, we primarily mean payroll transactions as well as expenditures. So what happens with the audit is the way it works is, we get hired by the board, then your management team, which is Mr. Gorski, this is Alan, the accounting-oriented people, and the entire support staff at the business office, present us with the records for audit. Our responsibility, then, is to report to you on the condition of the, of those records. And to get to the chase, quite frankly, right up front, your records that are presented to us are in perfect condition. We express what's known as a modified, let me rephrase, an unmodified opinion as to the financial statements as presented to us by your business office. Okay? I'll explain how we get there shortly. So those records are presented to us. We give an opinion. Our opinion is that it's unmodified. In the old days, there's not a lot of old timers there, but the old days, it was known as a clean opinion or an unqualified opinion. So records given to us, we think, and the terminology is, present fairly the financial condition of the district as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Now, how do we get there? Okay? You have two documents, by the way, that are, I believe, either in front of you or on the computer. The two is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And there's a thinner document, which is actually my representation to the board. So the thicker of the two documents contains a lot of financial information about the operation of the district for the year ended thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. Statistical data, demographic data, financial data, and it's set up so that one, not knowing a lot about Monroe Township, can do a proper evaluation of the district for either the purposes of determining if you're spending properly, or if you're, you know, your demographic factors are consistent with the end product of, of the, of the district, which is educating, educating the students. A lot of statistical information is contained in the, the thicker of the two documents. There's also notes to financial statements in there, which contain a description, by the way, which is probably maintained by forty-nine out of the fifty states. The same, almost the same exact wording. There's a, there's a description about the required accounting policies. It talks about recognition of revenue. It talks about pension liabilities. It talks about health benefit liabilities. It talks about description of your fixed asset accounting. It talks about also other things, contingent liabilities, any types of litigation, let me go, we go. And it's descriptive information that the readers need to know, for more better get a feel, other than the numbers, but to get a feel of the, for the verbiage of what's going on within the district. That information is all, again, presented in conjunction with the, the business office. We do check it, okay? We do go through it, make sure it's appropriate, make sure it's proper. So in the thicker of the two documents, there is one page I want to refer you to, which is the recapitulation of fund balance. It's on Exhibit C one, twelve of twelve, page one oh eight. Okay, and if you're, anyone's having trouble getting there, just tell me to slow down. So it's actually, you have to turn the book sideways. The C one is the main exhibit that summarizes the the main meat of the transactions for the year for your main operating fund. Okay, and by that, I mean all your general operations, teachers, security, health benefits, maintenance, tuition, transportation. You have a rather extensive bunch of gear. At the end of the year, we ended up with a fund balance, has five components. Okay? One of the components is the unassigned fund balance, which is your two percent statutory limit as to what you can retain. That's two point three million. You also maintain a capital reserve of seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand. You have encumbrances of one hundred and twenty thousand. You have excess surplus that is left over from the eighteen nineteen fiscal year of three point two million, but that's a mandatory, statutorily mandatory revenue item in the nineteen, in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. And then one other component, which I think is a good thing, is your excess surplus as a result of your nineteen twenty fiscal year, which is mandated for a revenue source in twenty-one twenty-two, is five point one billion dollars. So that is a significant increase and a good thing for the district, that you have this extra revenue there in order to offset operations for the twenty-one twenty-two district. Your, your recap of fund balance is in compliance with the statutory requirements with regards to the various limitations. So in a way, it's a good thing that you have a few more bucks for next year. Inside the document, the only thing that belongs to give opinions, we're hired by you to give an opinion, and our opinion, again, as I want to emphasize, is, is that it's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as presented. Records that were given are in outstanding shape, okay? We have, in the main funds, you have virtually, you know, you hear about auditors make journal entries. Well, we don't have journal entries. Your records are presented properly, and I'll tell you how we get there. And what I'm going to talk is, is kind of elaborated on in the thinner of the two documents, which is my document that I presented the board about the operation of the financial. Mind, our job is not to tell you that you're in great financial position. Our job is to tell you that the financial statements as presented are a fair presentation of the, of the records and the results of operation for the fiscal year ending. I just got done with another board talking about the same thing. In, in New Jersey, you can't really be in great financial shape, because the statutes work in such a way where they, if you have a great ear, they take the money in ear market. They don't take it from you. You're required to ear market for the next subsequent budget year. So, again, that number's five point one million. That's up from three point two million, which is a good thing. How did we get to this, this great opinion? We perform samples. We sample payroll transactions. We do random samples, all in accordance with the auditing standards. We run a sample of payroll transactions, verify that those transactions include proper base pay for that person, that their withholdings are proper, that they have documents on file that IRS requires, that INS requires, for example, a W four, a direct deposit authorization, an I nine, which has to do with immigration and naturalization. Also, statutorily required items like your PERS and statutory requirement for teacher certifications. All that stuff, everyone we tested was all properly on file. Your payroll system, you have a heavy payroll action going on in your district, and your payroll department, it came out unscathed in terms of our testing. There's a lot of action going on in your district. Meaning, you know, there's a lot going on with, in terms of number of employees, plus other, other compensation that they get. The records presented were in perfect condition. It's very, very diligent and very hardworking people down in the payroll department. So that's one of the items we test for. The other things we test for, and I think, Madam President, you've heard this before, we check expenditures. What do we check for? Again, we run samples. We check certain items that were required to check, like tuition contracts, like repairs and maintenance, like health benefits, transportation expenses, other statutorily required items. So what do we check for? Four major things. A, all expenditures are properly documented. That's true. All expenditures are properly coded with respect to the fiscal year. That's true. All expenditures are coded to the right budgetary line item. Now, it, it matters, because somewhere, someone is looking at the details of your expenditures and making some type of a correlation or analysis. We use a nationally recognized, like all the states do, chart of accounts. And so, for example, if something is to be coded, let's say code number two hundred dash three hundred, well, somewhere online, someone on a nationwide basis is looking at, possibly at every district to see what they're spending on certain items. Comes behind electric, tuition, legal fees, things like that. They look at that, so. And salaries and teach, mostly teacher salaries, administrative salaries. So everything that we touched was properly coded. So proper coding, proper fiscal year, proper documentation, and also important, everything was purchased in compliance with the public school contracts law. Requires that you either go to bid on anything over, and in your case was forty thousand dollars, that requires to be bid, okay, and, or purchase it under the state contract method, or through, which is very popular now, cooperative purchasing arrangements. Everything we found was properly documented in compliance with that and properly authorized in the minutes. Sometimes people may think there's a lot going on in a district, that there's a lot of things that you have to approve, and that's a good thing, because you're, you're the overseers of the taxpayers' dollars, and everything has to be transparent and upfront, and that's why we have, you know, resolutions approving things, and whether they're professional fees, whether they're consulting fees, or buying a lawnmower, or a tractor, or a roof, they're all properly documented and authorized. And by the way, we have, again, trickle people out. We have an individual there who kind of oversees all the physical plant, and every time we talk to him, he has a good handle on virtually every contractor that we use and every physical cost that we incur. We also look into, we, we check your ASSA. That works out very nicely. We also look into your food service fund. We use an outside service to manage it and to handle all the administrative requirements of the federal government and state government that are required. This past year, the operating expenses, which approximates the entire operation in the food service fund, is one point nine million. Okay, and what we do is, we actually look through, and by the way, that was an abbreviated amount, because if you know.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Yes.
Excuse me. Can you refer to the page you're on?
Yes, 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 yes.
You know, that's my favorite, favorite thing.
Yeah, that's favorite. Page thirty-five. In the bigger of the two books.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes. Thank you.
What we do, and again, if there's any questions, we'll address. We will also look at their records, but we also have an internal person, again, the single people out, because our results of our audit are always good because of people. This person who is retired, she checks everything the food service company does. She looks at their bills. She looks at their time sheets. She makes sure that everything is properly lined up. We also double-check that as well. Not as extensive as she does, but we do it sort of on a sample, ve- very, very light sample basis. And again, our results from that operation are, it's pretty, it's pretty well done, okay? We also do some work in the area of your early childhood enrichment and your Falcon kill. Those are, and have, you know, what I consider to be some nice revenue streams, and we, we do, we do keep an eye on that as well. In the end, all of our tests had very successful results. Okay, we had minimal, no, we had no journal entries that we would require, that would be called auditing entries, because there were no errors in what we found. First and foremost, though, I want to point out that the records as presented for audit, the general ledgers, that is, were in agreement on a monthly basis to the bank reconciliations, to the penny monthly. That's critical. That's important. Everything is lined up properly. It's lined up properly for us, which helps us give our opinion to the board that the records are presented fairly. So I want to point out that prior to this, for the members of the rest of the board, prior to issuance of the report in early February, we had an exit conference with the administration where we reviewed the audit as well as all the documentation in it. Last Wednesday night, we had a conference with the finance committee where we discussed in much detail the the audit and the report as well as the, what's called the AMR, the Auditor's Management Report. And our contract requires us to come to you to present to you the annual document, which is the annual comprehensive financial report as well as the AMR. So in the end, the AMR is the Auditor's Management Report. In the end, we have a clean opinion and there are no recommendations that require the board to take any corrective action. So again, I maybe I'm taking too long, you can stop me, but once I get going on this stuff, I like talking about the audit process. We're very happy with the presentation. We, again, I don't mind singling people out. I know Laura Allen is the controller, I call her the controller. The record she gives us are spot on. And I want to point out too, the people in the support, the building, the board building there, we kind of worked a little bit with each one of them because everyone has a different, you know, specialty there. All of our results were outstanding. They were cooperative. They were anxious to know that they did a good job and they worked very hard in helping us to get to the finalization of the audit test. So again, like I said, we have a clean opinion. Our obligation is to report that to the board. We're also obligated to let the board know of any items that require corrective action. There's need, there's none that do. I just think that it's good that the board maintained diligence in keeping the finance and business office properly staffed so as to not in the future have any blips or lapsation in in, you know, in terms of record keeping.
Madam President?
That concludes my presentation. I'm sure Mike may want to supplement what I'm saying because part of the thicker document is really written by the management team. Okay, as it's done in corporate audits. There's an M D and A, management discussion analysis, there's a letter. But like I said, in the thicker of the two, our audit opinion is only contained on like two or three pages.
Madam President, may I go through some highlights in the comprehensive annual financial report and the AMR briefly, which I think would be of great interest, especially to the new board members or members of the public who are not familiar with this document?
Okay, just do me a favor and use the pages, if you will.
Understood. And then certainly we should turn it over when I'm done with this brief presentation to board member questions. As Mr. Stankowitz said, and as we discussed in the finance committee meeting, the audit function is a critical one to give reliability to the financial statements back in the 1920s. And this goes back to chapter one of Accounting 101. Companies were issuing financial statements right from the controller or the CFO. And they were very rosy pictures of operations. They used estimates that were aggressive and not conservative. And there was failure of financial statements and loans throughout the industry. So the accounting profession came up with a way to correct that, and that was the independent auditor's function. And that is the cornerstone of accounting. To have an independent CPA, we audit the books and records of the district with standards set by the profession to render an opinion on the financial statements. And that opinion is what lenders and banks and the users of the financial statements, which includes everybody from banks down to parents, so that they could feel comfortable that what they're reading is reliable and relevant. So, you know, it was very critical advancement in the profession. Going to the larger document, I just want to highlight some pages here that I would hope everybody would take a look at. This really contains everything you want to know about the Monroe Township Board of Education. There is so much information in here, if you just know where to look, that you could really learn a lot about a school district. My predecessor once told me that if anybody was ever looking for a job and comparing school districts, all you need is a copy of their comprehensive annual financial report. You would tell all where the district priorities are and a lot about the school district. So, starting with the report, there's a transmittal letter on page one of the larger documents, the comprehensive annual financial report. And the transmittal letter is just an introduction and it says, we're pleased to provide you with the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30, 2020. It contains district basic financial statements. It contains useful financial and statistical information that I'll highlight in a moment. Responsibility for the accuracy and data and completeness and fairness of the presentation, including all disclosures, rests with the management of the organization, which is Dr. Alvik, Dr. Lehman, Laura Allen and myself. We are responsible for all the figurative, literal representations in the CAFR. And the auditor's opinion letter is his opinion on the accuracy of those statements. On page two, you will see a statistical presentation of average daily enrollment and a percentage change over time. Average daily enrollment is a little bit different than the reporting under the ASSA. Two different measures. Page three has a section that was completed by Dr. Lehman. It talks about what we did this year educationally. The major initiatives in section three are a worth read. And it will tell you the academic accomplishments and areas of focus for this last year and going forward. On page seven, you will see the district organization chart. And what's important to know is this is a snapshot as of June 30, 2020. So there has been changes to this since, we're aware of that. But this is as, everything you're seeing in this report is as of June 30, 2020. We're very thankful to the district officials listed on page eight, members of the Board of Education, and to the professional vendors who are listed on page nine, who facilitate the Board of Education in meeting our goals and objectives through the year. The independent auditor's report is on page 10. And there's a very interesting schedule on page 13 that came out of the Enron era. And it's called the Management Discussion and Analysis Letter. There's a lot of figures in this book that become blurry after a while. So the profession said, we want the key officials in the district, the superintendent, the business administrator, to speak to us in literal terms and tell us what happened. What are the highlights for the year? And we had a pretty good year for the year ended June 30, 20. The district was awarded $600,000 more state aid. We're on a path under S2 to full funding. Although many school districts are struggling with the tax levy cap, which we'll talk about more when we do the board training coming up on budget and finance. But in a nutshell, the tax levy cap is a limitation that was put on by Governor Christie in 2010 to district's ability to grow taxes. And what it states in a simply put is your general fund tax levy from the preceding year can only grow by 2% plus some adjustments that Monroe is no longer eligible for. So ours grows 2%. But even with that cap, we were able to budget over $2 million for capital projects, including all of the safety vestibule projects through five of our schools. And that's, that's an impressive feat to be able to meet everything educationally, hire all of the new staff that are required, live within cap, and still maintain the district's facilities and safeguard our students in accordance with the parents' desires. Another highlight this year was the refinancing or refunding of outstanding debt that had already been issued by the Board of Education previously for schools. This year, we saved $6 million in actual interest cost over the 18-year duration of those bonds by refinancing them in a very complex transaction.
Mr. Gorski, is there a page for that?
Page 14.
Okay. Thank you.
Since I've been the business administrator, we've had three refundings and we've saved over $10 million of interest cost alone on debt that you would have had to pay otherwise because of interest rates dropping and a review of that. And finally, we're in compliance with the requirements of the Department of Education with S1701. The next page I'll take you to is page 32. This shows proprietary funds. Now, the school district has the following major funds. The general fund, which is used for teacher salaries and the main operations of the school district. The special revenue fund, which is grants, state and federal grants. The debt service fund, which is a fund set up to pay all the principal and interest for the next year that come due. But this page takes you a little further and shows you proprietary funds, which are outside of those and are designed to operate as business-type funds. This starts off with the general fund, special revenue fund, debt service fund, as I mentioned. And then on page 34, it talks about the proprietary funds. The food service is our cafeteria operations. Early childhood enrichment and Falcon Care are designed programs that were designed to make a profit for the district in the wake of what was previously Mecca. The board tasked us with coming up with a business plan for some profitable funds that would supersede the BAST Network's operations here in the district. And we did so and we exceeded our expectations. And every year until this one with COVID, we were making $600,000 a year combined between the two funds, which was unrestricted profit that the board could do whatever they see fit with. This year, unfortunately, because of COVID, these two funds combined had a break even, which isn't bad considering that you continue to pay staff throughout the entire year. And then there's the food service fund, which is another favorable inclusion, even though we had school closures that severely impacted revenues and caused this year's operations to become a loss. The good news is we had enough retained earnings, prior year's net incomes combined, to absorb the loss and still stay solvent. Many school districts are insolvent right now in their cafeteria funds and will be borrowing from the general fund, from the taxpayers to subsidize lunch operations. We do not have that situation here this year. And we're doing everything proactively for next year to prevent that from happening, including the initiation of a breakfast program where we have a 100% return on investment so far, and we're exceeding our expectations there too. On page 37, you will see some fiduciary funds. These are some areas where we've collected money on different initiatives. And these are a type of reserve. Family leave insurance, unemployment insurance, private purpose, which is the Monroe Education Foundation, iPad Insurance, Payroll Agency Fund are presented there. On page 97 is the beginning of a schedule called C1. This is an important document in the comprehensive annual financial report because it shows the original budget as approved by the Board of Education at the beginning of the year, July 1, 2019. It shows board-approved budget transfers, the final budget, the actual spending and the variance. This report concludes on page 108, where we visited with Mr. Stankowitz, and this is called the conclusion of C1 that shows the fund balance. And what's noteworthy about the fund balance this year is that the excess surplus has reverted to the mean and is now at about 5.1 million dollars. That is because of many district initiatives. It's because of aggressive procurement measures. And there are some contributions there from the closing of schools. Now, that $5.1 million, this is the most important thing to understand about fund balance, is that it is a revenue source by statute required to carry over to a subsequent year. If you don't carry that same amount of surplus over from year to year, you will be forming a subsequent year budget either less or more money than you had the previous year. Let's say this $5 million was only 3 million. When we're working on the 2122 budget, we would have $2 million less, the difference between the 3 and the 5.1. So it's important to try to maintain this level of surplus every year. And the way we do that, Dr. Alvik, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Allen and I will attest, is by putting everything out to quote a bid even beyond what's required, joining purchasing consortiums that saved this district over $4 million since inception. And even items like purchase order fees late in the year, where Dr. Alvik will request that all nonessential spending cease because we recognize that by this time of the year, you have pretty much all of the important orders in already. And that helps contribute back to this recycling of surplus. There are exceptions, again, and I point out it's nonessential spending. Another page of interest is on page 115 that shows all of the special revenue fund grants, including a lot of COVID money that came in this year. This is where it's accounted for at the year end of June 30, 2020. And the grants that this district has in Fund 20 are all segregated in our Board Secretary report to help users see where each one is and understand it a little more clearly as opposed to lumping them together, which the state allows you to do. We break out each one, and I thank Mrs. Allen for that contribution. Title one, title two, title three. Title three immigrant, title four regular, IDEA, parts school, preschool and regular. And the CARES Act is all disclosed there. And then there's a lot of statistical and demographic information in the back that is quite interesting. On page 134, you will see the outstanding debt that this district has as of June 30, 2020. This was one of the favorite schedules for Mrs. Arminio before she came on the board. What is the district outstanding debt? Very good question because as Mr. Stankowitz would attest, the most important part of the financial statements is the balance sheet and liabilities are one that you should be familiar with. It also shows the capital leases and the percentage of personal income. On page 136, it shows your it shows your outstanding borrowing capacity. On page 138, it shows information about the population, personal incomes, even your unemployment rate specific to Monroe is listed on page 138. We have to put all of this together. So I hope it doesn't go unread. By the way, Monroe's unemployment rate is at a 10-year low of 3.3% for the year ended June 30, 2020. And finally, there's a very important page on 141 that shows enrollment from the ASSA account, operating expenditures, cost per pupil, which is a wonderful gauge to see how the district is running with spending on the average pupil. The percentage change this year is 0.81% increase. Last year it was 5.17 and then 6.6 the year before that. This is very favorable outlier for the Jamesburg Agreement that we talked about the other night at finance. Because as Monroe's per pupil spending is low and being suppressed, the amount of budget that Jamesburg is overpaying, the difference leads back to that overage and pays back the indebtedness. So when you see Monroe's per pupil costs only increased by eight tenths of 1%, that's a good setup for that calculation this year that hopefully that trend will continue and Jamesburg's budgeted number will exceed that of the actual count. that trend will continue and Jamesburg's budgeted number will exceed that of the actual count. At the conclusion of tonight's meeting, when the board adopts the two documents of the audit, I will post both of these on the district website and I encourage everybody, please take a look. And if you have any questions, don't ever hesitate to call the business office and ask because once you understand this document here, you will find great use for it. And the only other one is the smaller one, that's the Auditor's Management Report. That's where the auditor comments on any potential errors that were found in the ASSA account and the audit recommendations, if any, would be listed in this smaller of the two reports. There are no audit recommendations and there was not a single error found in the district's DRTRS or ASSA reports this year, not one. That's, that's awesome. In conclusion, I would just like to say what is most noteworthy about this year is the business office and a central office resistance to shock, external shock. We have gone through some incredibly shocking events in the last few years, including payroll provider who collapsed and lost all cumulative data and told us we had better go get more check stock in order to pay staff. We rebuilt all of that information and no one lost a check. They're paid on time and their pay stubs were accurate to within four dollars of total district FICA. We were hit with a ransomware attack in August last year, right after we just tied out all of the accounting records. The ransomware attack locked up the server. We were able to restore that from a cloud backup and never even talked to the ransom requesters and with some exception of transportation, didn't lose any records through that. And now this year was COVID. And I want to, I want to give you a visual what our office was like in March. You know, a lot of, a lot of district functions can change on a virtual format. Dr. Alvek and Dr. Lehman have done a fantastic job that they could talk about there. From a business function, we had payroll completely transitioned to virtual two days. Some functions cannot be done virtually. We have a milk crate of mail arrive at the business office every single day. And that has to get open, the checks have to be deposited by statute within a period of time. We have to pay bills and there's a lot of physical work that's done in the business office. I'll never forget back in March when I walked into an office full of Laura Allen, Donna Rye Fogel, Nancy Tagliafarro, Luann Pecorino and Diana. Masks, masks weren't even available then, we were using gloves and like scarfs and performing our job. These are heroes in every sense of the word that's been used with COVID. And despite all of those challenges, all of the accounting records have been presented to this board and the superintendent, as Mr. Stankowitz has said, very respectfully. So I want to thank all of those staff members for all of their hard work and putting themselves at risk so that you could enjoy a perfect audit this evening. Madam President?
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank the business admin, the business office for all of their hard work and putting together things. There are a lot of people there. And so I thank all of you individually as well as as a team. We appreciate the documentation and we recognize that it is a large task to have a hundred and thirty million dollar budget, to have about a hundred and eighteen million dollars out in debt and to have a growing district that is putting a lot of pressure on, you know, both the central office and the members of our community. So thank you for your work and for the document, Mr. Stankowitz. Thank you as well for your presentation. Does anyone have any questions for either Mr. Stankowitz or Mr. Gorski at this time? Mr. Paul Laurie?
Madam President, first I want to congratulate and thank, I know we pay you, Mr. Stankowitz, but the amount of work you do to like to reconcile our budgets and year after year is really stellar and we appreciate that on behalf of Monroe Township. Same thing goes to Michael Gorski and Ms. Adams for, for all the work that you guys do in, in the, in the business office. So I got a couple of questions to, to Mike. One of the things that we constantly, it came up constantly last year was the savings from COVID. I realize that this budget reflects only until the end of June twenty twenty, which probably captures about four months worth of closure of the school district. And you touched on it when you said that our excess surplus went from three point two eight nine million to five point one million. And you attribute some of it to the COVID situation. So could you shed a little bit more light on that to say where we realized some savings so that we know what to expect on the back end of the COVID, which is the, the remaining six months of the fiscal year twenty twenty? And hopefully this is going to end soon. So that's one question. The other question is on page one thirty eight, when you're going through, I see that the, the year and population and the income levels and per person per capita personal income, all of those are exactly the same over the years. How can that be?
Actually, the source of the, the, the primary source is the Census Bureau and the numbers don't really change that much. For example, population, next year there'll be a different story because the information will be more available. It's just not available from the sources that are noted in here. So basically, it, it is misleading because quite frankly, I don't know how many more people moved in in the last ten years in Monroe, but it's got to be several thousand. And the personal income had to have changed and the per capita income obviously has to change. So yeah, I mean, that's one of the dilemmas we have with this data is that more current data is, it's just not out there from, from reliable sources. Okay?
Mr. Stankowitz, what you're saying is that the two ten-
When is the results of the census going to be available, do you know? The most recent census that we just-
I thought I heard they're talking about September. I thought I heard that of, of twenty one, yeah. I thought they were pushing for a change to that because I don't know that they got, they captured everyone that they're supposed to have.
But for in order- Yeah, Mr. Stankowitz, I, I get it. I think they, these are the two, two hundred and twenty ten census data that's been not even prorated, just submitted as is. Now, we, our board is, is contemplating and constantly looking at the increase in population, increase in, you know, in, in student growth and things like that to make some capital investments down the road. So isn't it possible for the Board of Ed to have a direct contact at the school, at, at the municipal level to get that information in to see what the population change is? Because I guarantee it right now that it's not thirty nine thousand one hundred and thirty two.
Oh, no, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I don't, I don't know. Some of the stuff is written, by the way, with big cities in mind and some of the bigger cities have these planning commissions and that monitor it like on a daily basis, like the city of Phoenix or the city of Dallas, okay? I don't think that Monroe Township itself at City Hall has that available. And by all means, if it is available, we're happy to, to take it. And I certainly don't think that, that they have an official source for the per capita income just yet. Most of that stuff comes out of the census. And sometimes actually per capita income, there's two different sources it comes from. One is the Bureau of Census, the other one is the Bureau of Commerce. So, you know, you don't, we don't know, you know, what the most efficient one is. But again, you're right, it, it's, it's a little misleading, but that's, that's all we have to deal with at this stage. It's, it's virtually every audit unless you have a large city that monitors it. And I, I know from just driving, I know there's growth, you know, I, I see it.
Well, one, one of the things, Mr. Stankowitz, that the, the metropolitan planning organizations, the MPOs do is they have a model that actually looks at the, the population growth and economic growth and per capita. But maybe outside the realm of possibilities for us to get the data, but it's updated on a constantly, an annual basis based on the model, gravity model that they use to, to get that information. But, you know, anyway, I just don't want people to get confused when, when they see the document, they see a, a same exact number over the ten years in terms of the population and, and the, the per capita income across the board. So going back to the first question for Mr. Gorski, what was realized within the timeframe?
Well, it, it's all in the soup at this point in the excess surplus calculation. That's where it all folds. The additional revenue beyond what was budgeted and every single expenditure line item from budget to actual on that C one exhibit shows the particular areas that had surplus or, or not. I will say that, you know, through negotiations, it was presented that there was a lot of savings through teacher extra pay items. That, that was in the range of a few hundred thousand dollars. As we presented previously, there were some savings from energy, lighting and things like that with the schools being closed. So, but there were also other areas that the district suffered financially on because of COVID. Number one is Falcon Care ECE. Putting together the twenty one twenty two budget, I would love to have a resolution tonight to transfer six hundred thousand dollars to the budget. That evaporated this year, we don't have it. There's no more bank cap available to this district. So overall, the excess surplus number went up one point eight million, the number is now the, the five-year mean. And, you know, certainly there were some savings, but some offsets with additional cost for PPE and Plexiglas. We have Plexiglas in every single building now that once this is over, we probably won't know what to do.
Madam President? Mike, Pete, let, let me just finish this. So Mike, is it reasonable at this point to expect slightly higher savings than what we realized in the first four months of the, of twenty twenty?
With schools planning to reopen, you mean?
I mean, yeah. Not to put you on the spot, that's okay. I, I, I'm just wondering what the savings would be that we can think about moving forward into the next budget year.
You know, it's hard to predict. I'd have to think about an answer for that because with the reopening plan, there's going to be some additional expenses. There's going to be additional precautions, additional dollars spread all over. I can't wait for that to happen in normal state of return and report on that later.
Thank you.
Who raised it, Mr. Tifano, before you go, Mr. Gorski, I remember in the spring when the public and some board members did ask about savings, we were told that it was sort of a wash. So now you're saying we were able to save over a million dollars?
No, 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 not a million dollars. Excess surplus in total, which is the aggregate of revenue variances and spending variances and Falcon Care was one point eight million dollars higher.
Do we have any sorting of what, you know, the difference between the, the cost and the savings from the closing of the schools?
I could only estimate that the savings from the closing of schools is somewhere around six to seven hundred thousand dollars. And that, that's an easier number to estimate now than where we were back in March. Certainly there were savings in the areas of energy and some heating. But like we had, we had no snow removal last year. So that also contributed to the excess surplus number. It would be like dissecting a bowl of soup once it's all prepared at this point to figure out where each one came from. But I think it's fair to say that it's probably about six, maybe seven hundred thousand dollars of savings from COVID with, with some terrible offsets like losses from Falcon Care and the cafeteria program.
So, so even and above the losses, you're saying there might be six hundred thousand? I just want to be clear, I'm sorry I'm being obtuse, but I just want to be clear.
Just specifically COVID effect on finance probably contributed six to seven hundred thousand dollars to the excess surplus increase.
Okay.
The, the rest was through aggressive procurement measures, purchase order freezes from last year, which saved about a million dollars for this budget year of two thousand twenty.
Okay.
And, you know, other areas.
Okay.
But, but there were some, some catastrophic, you know, losses, like Falcon Care is in a different fund and that's six hundred thousand dollars that we don't have that we had last year. And the cafeteria fund is on thin ice and we're watching that next year so we don't have to loan money from the general fund.
Okay, so again, I apologize to everyone listening to me that if, do the losses, do the losses, are they, you have, we have the losses and then we have what we've gained. Do they gate themselves out? Is that, that's what I'm really trying to determine.
Excess surplus grew one point eight million.
Right.
But then you have to subtract from that six hundred from Falcon Care that's not reflected in that excess surplus number. So the total savings, if you will, grew about one point two million. And maybe, maybe half of that was from the closure of schools. The other half was through administrative savings.
All right, okay, I think, Mr. Tifano, you had your hand up, I'm sorry that I kept you.
Yes, I just, I, I think it's important that we notify the public when and where they're able to view this budget for themselves. I think Mr. Gorski should mention where it's available.
Thanks, it will be identified right on the front page of the website under an area called June thirty, two thousand twenty audit. Click on that and we will have three reports for you, the larger document called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, C A F R, the smaller report called the Auditor's Management Report, the AMR, and the corrective action plan that's required of school districts showing that we had no audit recommendations and nothing to correct.
Thank you.
Manu?
Yes, Mr. Chiarella?
Yeah, I just have a question on the unemployment rate, the three point three percent, is that rate from before COVID, pre-COVID?
That, that rate was reported just after June thirty, two thousand twenty. So it was timely for the conclusion of this audit and that comes from Department of Labor and Workforce Development and that's-
Yeah. Please search, Michael, that was released in March of twenty. That was March of twenty it was released. It takes them a while to derive the number, it takes about three, four months to finalize it, but yeah, I mean, that, that's on a nice trail.
So then, but if it was done in March of, of two thousand twenty, then this three point three percent would have been prior to COVID where we had the astronomical loss of jobs and the shutdown. I'm just wondering where we're at right now. I know that's probably not possible to get that information, but I'm just trying to, to help us out, I'll share.
Yeah, this was the closest one to the audit period. We, we could take a look at that at a finance committee meeting and see if we can find another quarter later.
You know, actually, the report usually comes out around March or April. So we're very close to, to having it. Michael, if I, if I spot it, I will forward it over to you. That, that, they only do it once a year, that, that group.
Great, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I had a question. So with, I had a question with the Food Services Fund. You mentioned that there was a loss for this year. You're able to make up that with the net income from prior years? Is that correct?
Yes, um, let me, let me, Jerry, you want to take that or you want me to explain it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we had sufficient-
The page again. Where's, what page?
Thirty-
Page thirty, thirty-four.
Okay.
You know, we are allowed to accumulate fund balance, okay? And fund balance accumulates excess earnings that you're, that accrue to your fund. However, it is limited to thirty percent of your expenditures. Every, it's a limit. So we had sufficient monies in the fund balance to absorb the loss for, for nineteen twenty. So yeah, that, that fortunately we had that coupled with also, I believe Mr. Gorski had negotiated with Mets a reduction in their administration and management fee approximating, I believe it was thirty-five percent of the fee. So that, that kind of pulled us out of the, out of the zone where we had, we might have had even bigger loss. So this prior year earnings were available to absorb the current year loss.
And, and how much was that that we used in the prior year?
Thirty three thousand dollar loss.
I'm sorry.
On page thirty five, it shows a thirty three thousand dollar loss, about three quarters the way down the page. Thirty three thousand, three sixty five ninety in print. That's the loss from operations this year, including depreciation. When combined with the retained earnings, which are prior year income numbers that accumulate, we have left a retained earnings position of eleven thousand, two thirty, which is on page thirty four. That is a very slim margin between retained earnings and accumulated deficit. And that's why we're looking at all these new initiatives for next year to bring in some more revenue.
Okay, and, and you said, Mr. Stankowitz, you can keep thirty percent, is that, is that what you said?
Yeah, actually, that, that calculation is in the, in the two documents. Thirty percent of your operating expenses, net of depreciation. Okay, so you're allowed to keep X amount of dollars. After that, you have to develop a, you can get a nasty grant from the state that says you're over the thirty percent, please give us a plan of action how you're going to get under. Okay, what you do is you spend more on the, on the function because you're not- Because you're not allowed to use excess monies in the Food Service Fund for tax relief, okay? You're not allowed to lose a lot of money either. In fact, you're not really allowed to go into a what's called a technical deficit. If we had a technical deficit, we would have to fund it through the general fund operations to June 30. So we're, you know, we're, we're on the border here in terms of the 33 grand. We have a few bucks left in the account, but you know, we have to, it has to be monitored and we don't, we we don't monitor it monthly. Like, for example, I know, I know the federal government monitors everybody on that. They don't. They don't want you to make too much money off of them. But they also know that you can't lose money either. So that's why there's that latitude to keep the 30% factor.
Okay.
Ms. Kirby, to Mr. Stankowitz's point before, if you look at page 34, you will see other receivable under the asset section, 32,130. That is the amount of rebate that we were able to negotiate with Mets because of the school closures off of their management fee. So they gave us 35% of back off their fee. And that money came in in July. That's why it's receivable here.
So so that money was, that was just a reduction in our cost? That that's not real money?
Correct.
From the bank. Okay.
Correct.
It was a reduction of cost. Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do I see any hands? Am I missing anyone?
I just have one more question. More of a, you know, a general question. I know the public has several times talked about forensic audits. How does this audit compare to a forensic audit? Just so the public knows, understands what.
Actually, there really is no such thing as a forensic audit. There's forensic accounting, okay, but a forensic audit doesn't really exist. If you were looking for, depending on what you're looking for, it would come under the area of agreed upon procedures. There's this, in the, in the auditing world, there's this concept called agreed upon procedures. If you wanted to check some more items or check area, but there there's really no such thing as a forensic audit. They that that person that you were hired to do whatever that you wanted to do, it would be, you have to give instructions as to what they're looking for or what you want them to look for. The state used to require an internal control audit. Several years ago, they they kind of backed off of that because it costs too much. But now there's, I I don't know that much about forensic audits, to be quite frank with you, because there's really no such thing as one. So I I don't dabble in areas that I don't, and I don't do that type of work anyway. I only stick with normal annual audit work.
Thank you.
Mr. Stankowitz, one, one follow up to that. If there was an area of concern in this audit that came to your attention, which would require a forensic accounting. Isn't that something that you would be mandated to bring to the board's attention?
Yeah, if there were sufficient errors or problems, that would be in the management. That would be the AMR. But however, someone, maybe not necessarily the BA or the final, someone would have to, and by the way, they would know about it way before the report was issued. Someone would have to then either address it by either correcting it, or if they felt that it was that big of an item, bring someone in to look in into that area and see if there was any other problems. But we we haven't seen anything, as I indicated. But yeah, if we, if there were, we'd be obligated to bring it to the board's attention. And they would have to take either corrective action or investigate it further.
Mr. Stankowitz, like in Newark, the school district in Newark had millions of dollars of missing money one year with an audit. Wouldn't you think that that wouldn't require perhaps a forensic review into what happened to the cash?
Absolutely.
And and our cash is tied out to the penny. Isn't that correct?
Monthly, yes, it does.
Since we're just talking about definitions. Mr. Stankowitz, can you talk about either the difference or the similarity between a sample? When when you ask for a sample size, are you giving the sample or is it a random selection by you as the auditor?
It's a random sample. We have our. Look, we have the first check number of the year, the last check number of the year. It's very simple. Okay, and then we select a number that we want to sample. And we are people running through a random number generator. It's all very basic, nothing fancy. We run through a random number generator and we schedule out those particular checks and those are the ones that we look at. We could do transactions from, you know, from a 25 sample, 100 sample, or 120 sample. Depends on how much sampling we want to do and and what the requirements are.
Okay, and you you randomized the sample, right?
Yeah, that's my discretion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Michelle?
Mr. Rutzke?
If I may?
Yes, please.
So I just wanted to say I thought Mr. Stankowitz and Mr. Gorski gave great overviews of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as well as the Auditor's Management Report and I just don't want to let it go unsaid. It's been briefly said, but let's close with the fact that this came with no audit recommendations, no negative audit comments and in a calendar year that closed out in the midst of the chaos of COVID when we didn't really know and we couldn't go into the offices, Mike said, and they had to sort of adjust on the fly to payroll and and things of that nature. I just, I feel like that's an amazing accomplishment. And it it just, I just wanted to say thank you, congratulations to both of you, Mike, to your whole team with accounts payable, accounts receivable, Ms. Allen and 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 all the bodies that will go into putting this together and having everything in place. To find nothing is fantastic. So really, just wanted to say job well done to everybody and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rutzke, and don't leave out Dr. Alvik or Dr. Lehman. They are integral to the internal control process.
Of course, I was just going to say that. But thank you, Dr. Alvik and Dr. Lehman.
Mr. Chiarella, did you have a question?
I have a motion if everyone is done asking questions or making comments.
Anyone else? Oh, yes, Ms. Belko.
So I I just wanted to go back to Ms. Arminio's comment about the sample size. Is there a certain percentage of the sample that you, you know, if you check 1,000 to check 2,500, so that's 2,500 checks? Is there a certain percentage of those amount of checks that you decide you want to do the random sample on? So do you say we want to see 25% and is that where you get your random generator or?
We have, we have statistics that we use and based on assumptions, based on what we call tolerable rates, anticipated rates. But it's a pretty standardized number. Okay, and samples sometimes, you know, the population could be 100,000. In some auditing theories, they say, well, okay, fine, if it's 100,000 units. Okay, you still sample X, whether it's 2,500 units or 100,000. But I I make the decision as to what I want to sample. And also with with input from the statistical sample information that we that we have available to us through our through our auditing services.
Shall we give Mr. Chiarella the floor? Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Chiarella?
Thank you, Madam President. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education accept and approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the Auditor's Management Report on Administrative Findings, Financial Compliance and Performance, and hereby approve and authorize the submission of the Required Corrective Action Plan, CAP, in the county office indicating that there are no recommendations for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
So move.
Do I have a second? That was Mr. Tofano and Mr. Rutzke seconded it. Mr. Gorski, I would imagine we should have a formal roll call.
So I mean, the only question I have is I thought Mr. Chiarella moved the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was, okay. He moved the motion. Yeah, didn't I say that?
Yeah, but then it's just Peter seconding it.
No, it was Paul seconded. Didn't you second it, Paul?
No, Peter did.
Oh, didn't see you, Peter. Wave your hand. Okay.
All right, motion moved by Mr. Chiarella, second about Mr. Tofano.
Thank you.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bearden?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Pelori?
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby? Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
And Ms. Arminio?
Yes, and once again, to all the man hours, men and women hours that came in, that were involved in producing this, thank you very much to all.
Thank you, and thank you to the board for your support.
Okay, shall we move on to Mr. Stankowitz? Any last comments you wish to make?
I I appreciate the support of the board and I I like to do a good job. I want to make sure that that you're aware that the people in your board office do an excellent job and thank them. I thank them for their hard work. They're the ones that make it happen, not not me, so.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, sir, and we.
Have a good night.
Yep. Okay, moving on. We will have committee reports and following that, we will have the first the first public forum. The committee reports, please. Mr. Tofano?
Our meeting took place on February 10. The committee chair opened the meeting with a statement identifying the urgent need to address student growth. Prior to the meeting, all members of the committee had been provided the most recent February 2020 demographic study prepared for the board. He then asked those members of the committee and administration who had attended a visit to the Claremont School in Franklin Township to share their observations. Thoughts and opinions on this school. The consensus was that it was a beautiful, well-laid out school and had and and that had some shortcomings in the area of HVAC system and some floor finishes, but overall is a construction type that the board would like to see further research and consider for future construction in Monroe. A lengthy and in-depth discussion followed amongst all members reviewing various options for constructions to address student growth. Dr. Alvik provided a PowerPoint presentation, which was a recap of previous design options reviewed by the board in 2020. At the conclusion of the meeting, committee members offered suggestions to the chair for a resolution to be presented at the upcoming public meeting that would authorize administration to proceed with the limited design study. Administration will await directions from the board in the form of an approved resolution on which path to follow. And with that, I'd like to make a motion as recommended by the Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Committee of the Monroe Township Board of Education. I hereby move that the Board of Education, one, authorize a direct, authorize and direct administration to engage in a limited design study to explore the cost of a construction. The construction of a new school facility similar to the Claremont Elementary School located in Franklin Township, New Jersey, to be constructed on land owned by the board located at 227 Applegoth Road. And two, authorize and direct district administration to solicit proposals for professional services, including but not limited to the architect and cost engineers previously contracted by Franklin Township Board of Education that designed the Claremont Elementary School for reasons of cost, efficiency and consistency. And three, to authorize and direct administration to engage the district architect and engineer of record to update the project cost estimated for additions to Barclay Brook School, Brookside School and the Monroe Township High School. The board president, the superintendent of schools and the business administrator's board secretary hereby authorize and directed to take all necessary steps to implement the action of the Board of Education dated June 15.
Dated June 15?
I'm sorry. February 15.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Oh. Okay.
Seconded by Ms. Kirby?
Sure. Either.
Okay, any discussion? I'm sure someone has a question.
Yeah, Madam President, this is Andy Pelori. A couple of things. Obviously, I'm no longer on the Building, Grounds and Transportation, but I did not get the demographic report. So I don't know what we're looking at in terms of growth. That's number one. I think the the committee chair said that all members were part of the discussion. I was not invited and I could not even go to the meeting because that would constitute a quorum. So I don't think anybody other than the Building, Grounds and Transportation folks were there at the meeting. Third thing is I I missed the the visit to the to Claremont because it moved from one Monday to another. That's on me, but I don't know exactly what we're looking at in terms of construction. What type of construction, what they have done, at least from my engineering perspective, so I could really shed some light on it, but I don't have that. And I could do this on my own if if I need to at some point with the permission from you and and the superintendent. The third thing is that, the fourth thing is the same architect and the same engineer to do what they did in Claremont, I don't like that at all. Anything that you do in a professional way, it has to be done through open and fair bidding process. You just can't arbitrarily decide you want to pick an architect or an engineer and come and design it. That is no, no, it's never done anywhere that I'm aware of. So I'm not sure where this motion is coming from, so I rest my case on that.
I I think they, well, setting aside some of your objections, which are, you know, we could discuss. I think what the, and I'll let Mr. Tofano also speak. The Buildings and Grounds and Transportation Committee looked at, I think the reason, the intent of having the design or at least getting an idea from these people about the Claremont School because they've actually done that particular school in that particular way. I don't think we're looking for them to build it or anything. I think we're looking for them to take a look at the design and and how it would work in Monroe because they have the experience. So and they build that kind of building, right? And if you're saying that's not appropriate in the industry?
Yeah, Ms. Arminio, I I understand the intent. So let's just say that, you know, Mr. Tofano got the Claremont School. Andy Pelori is going to get some something in Plainsboro. And Rupa Siegel gets something from Weinland because their friends work there. We're not going to just unilaterally approve that. They got to be a process to make sure that they're qualified. I mean, obviously, you're not going to give a contract to somebody who is not qualified and has done that work before. But I think we need to go through the open bidding process to do that. So what the the resolution said, if I heard it correctly, because that's the first time I'm seeing the resolution, is that they would like to engage the architectural and engineering firm to look at the concept development study and create the primary engineering design drawings. That's what I heard.
Mr. Gorski, do do we have to go through the bid process to have them get involved in this project and give us some some idea of the cost? It's not a contract. We're not giving them a contract.
No, no. This is as the, maybe I should read the resolution again and then answer that question just so everybody understands it. But this is a limited design study. And what we're looking to focus on here is to have the committee get some general information on on cost. How much would it cost to build the Claremont School on land owned by the district at Applegoth? And to utilize the professionals needed for this cost understanding, you would need an architect and a cost engineer, certainly. Those are professionals with licenses issued by the state. So they're exempt from bidding, but you are obligated to do some competitive contracting as far as checking the rates and such before you award the contract. So, you know, as part of this limited design study, we would ask for the fees upfront from the architect and the engineer and see how much they are and
Right.
You know, I think that I think the motive here of the committee, and I don't want to speak for anybody, you've got plenty of committee members here, was to create efficiency by using the same people who just designed it because it might be less costly for them just to submit their plans and costs and then just update it for current construction. And then consistency because you're talking to the ones who just completed that project.
Yeah, Mr. Gorski, from a logic perspective, I understand and I get it. But your statement that as licensed professionals, they don't need to be bid openly is completely inaccurate. You know, even for a $5,000 job that goes with any entity is a bid project. And you may end up selecting not purely based on the cost, but also based on the experience. But the process has to be followed. Having said that, there are always thresholds that we can exempt from. In other words, I believe $40,000 or something that you have for Monroe Township School District, that if it's within that, you don't need bidding, provided that you've gone through the the open bidding process initially to bring them on board. But I don't think these people who have designed, I don't know who designed it, the Claremont, so I can't speak for it. is that they probably are not pre-qualified by the Monroe Township School District to be providing professional services, so you do need to do a contract.
Mr. Polari, where I agree with you, you do need a contract at the conclusion of this. These services are exempt from bidding because they're professional service contracts. And it is prudent for a district to engage in competitive contracting to test and see what other rates are for similar services. But this is where the state gives Board of Education's latitude in procurement, because you're not only looking at quantitative measures, what something costs, but also the qualitative measures of what these professionals offer. It would be a tragedy to go with the lowest-cost architect and have a school that was under designed to your satisfaction.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with you. The point is, when you said that limited design, in the engineering world, I can tell you there's no such thing as sufficient design or, you know, limited design. You put a number on it. Do you need a 10% design? Do you need a 20% design? Do you need a 30% design? For you to be able to establish an accurate cost estimate for it, you need to have at least a 20% to 30% design to come up with the numbers. I mean, I think that's the issue that we had even in the past that I was fighting, is that we're taking, you know, $60, $70 million, we're adding a 20% contingency to it to get to $80 million, then adding another uncertainty contingency on top of that, bringing it to $100 million, and then all of a sudden, the number is out. Let's do this right. Let's get all our ducks in a row and get this thing done. I'm all for getting this thing done, because that's what we're tasked to do for the district. And Mr. Gagliardi, they have an opinion on this.
That was going to be my next suggestion. Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to weigh in on that, this discussion?
I believe that Mr. Gorski's description of the process is accurate, and I think really where the discussion went awry is that the questions from one or more board members in terms of using the term bid, were using the lawful term and the legal term interchangeably. So getting competitive prices is not a bid in the sense that with a bid, you're obligated to go with the lowest possible bidder. That is not to say that you don't get prices and compare prices. The only difference is it's not a sealed bid opening, and you're not compelled to go with the lowest responsible bidder. It seems to me that the process that was described by Mr. Gorski is a lawful process. To the extent there are any questions as he goes through it, of course, I'm available to answer, but I have no challenge with the general description provided to the board this evening.
And should we put a limit on that? Would that be prudent to put a cost limit on that?
I don't think you need to put a cost limit on it, because ultimately, the board will decide whether or not to move forward with retaining whoever the administration recommends. So the board controls the process at the outset.
Right, but I'm not worried about retaining them to do the work. I'm sure there's a cost for just getting the information from them.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You mean whether someone would charge you to prepare that?
Right.
I don't know if Mr. Gorski has had any discussions, but generally speaking, that is unusual in a process like this. If he's had any discussions that suggest that the vendors he's speaking to would charge you, he can speak up. That's unusual to do that with a public body.
Well, for example, Mr. Gorski, I'm sorry, when we had, I think it was Designs Idea Group do the workup for the Applegarth, you know, Applegarth, I think that came in at $69 million. Did we get charged? Do we pay for that information?
Yes, we did. I don't have that information on hand, what that was. But this is where we engage in competitive contracting. You're not required to go to bid or quote because these are professional service contracts. But we are required to do our due diligence and make sure that the hourly rate for this architect is not three times what a normal one-serving school districts would charge. That work is always performed on our end and will be performed here, too.
Okay, you're comfortable with that?
Madam President, I just want to clarify Mr. Gagliardi's assertion that, well, Mr. Gagliardi, when I say bids, bids are not necessarily financial bids. The bids include qualifications and the individual resumes and their past experience. The bid is a package that consists of cost qualifications and the people you're proposing on it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you, but when you were describing the bid packet, and Mr. Gorski was making a distinction, it's the bid process as defined in the statute, as opposed to the way you were using the term bid. So I understood that you were using a very technical term, one familiar to your world, one familiar to his, and it's not precisely the same. I understood exactly the exchange.
Understood.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gorski. I think I interrupted you several times. Please go, continue.
No, I think you're courteous enough to let me answer that. We will engage in competitive contracting. We will certainly, as is resolution direct, use the architect and the cost engineer that were used by Franklin Township for Claremont School. But I will also perform competitive contracting analytics, just making sure that these prices are reasonable and that you're getting something of value. And then ultimately, it's going to be a resolution put forth to the board once this limited design study is done, whether you want to put this project out to bid. And actually, before that, the board would have to even authorize the project itself. So there's a lot of steps to come. This is the first bite at the apple, just to get a cost for what it would be to put that Claremont School on Applegarth, which I think was the spirit of what the committee wanted.
Michelle?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Tofano.
I think also I had in mind, along with the board, with the committee, to try to get us this big-ticket item at the least cost possible because of the COVID epidemic and the state of our economy and the real, real need to pass this referendum if we decide to go ahead with one. So big-ticket item, least cost to the community, and to alleviate the leaking dam as best we can in the meantime. So that's the reason why we wanted to do it this way.
Okay, Ms. Siegel, yes?
Hi, Mr. Tofano, I have a question. Since some of us were not part of the presentation or didn't see the Claremont School, could you share some of the things that you thought were, made the Claremont School possibly a good fit for our district? Maybe share some of the thoughts?
Well, the, I went around during the meeting, and I asked every member of the committee, as well as Dory, Mike, and Mr. Take, what they thought of the facility. The things that were very that made them happy, basically, was that the construction went up fast. It's a steel building with brick on the inside. The only major problems that, not major problems, but the only problems that were identified were the heating system that they used. The superintendent of schools there said that they had a lot of trouble with that heating system, but that could be modified in our build. And also, the floors on the, in the common areas of the building are polished concrete, which do, don't have any functioning problems, but aesthetically, they have cracks in them because of settling that have to be filled, have to be polished. In the classrooms, there's regular flooring, the tiles and things like that. So all in all, the construction went up fast. It was inexpensive. The school was built to hold over 1,000, almost over 1,000 students. Right now, it's about 780 students there, but it can't hold 1,000. And it's a very inexpensive facility for the amount of use that it would serve in our district. And it would alleviate great pressures, and I'm sure Dr. Alvik could speak on that as well, give you some more details of it.
Dr. Alvik, would you like to just speak to it?
So we, the superintendent of schools did take us around. He showed us the classrooms. The classrooms are very similar to what we see in our schools with the commies. Some of the some of the things that this school has done that we, that our district hasn't done in the past is they built it to the LEED standards. I don't know what that stands for. That would be a Jerry Tate question. But basically, what that means is it was designed to for the environment. So, for example, the windows on the north side of the building are smaller than the windows on the south side of the building, so that you let in more light. The classroom ceilings were on a slant, and that was to, for better lighting and for temperature regulation in the class. They had canopies over the windows so that it moderated the light coming into the classroom, but also dealt with the heat. So there were a lot of things like that that were put into the system. As Mr. Tofano mentioned, the two things that the superintendent did share with us that he, you know, were kind of a negative as they were building it, was the polished concrete floor. They actually, in the foyer area, right when you first walk in the building, they actually replaced that with tile similar to what we have in our schools to make it look nicer. And that really was the reason, was to make it look nicer. There's nothing wrong with the polished concrete floor, just that it had cracks in it. And you could see it. They sealed them and they were safe, but just that it was there. And then the other issue was the heating system that they used that was supposed to be, it's highly efficient, but they weren't, they're not happy with it because the building is cold. They actually used some of their funding this year to buy heaters for some of the classrooms that they were putting in. They designed the building for some of their special education populations, so they did have a sensory room where they had specific things put into it. Their cafeteria was a cafeteria, gym, and stage, similar to what we have at Oak Tree School. They did have the playground in the back. It was built, and the superintendent kind of calls it barn-like because the outside is not the brick face, it's more of the metal face. And the reason that they wanted to do that, one, it is cheaper, and two, it was, it fit into the landscape in Franklin Township, which is a very, the area where the school was being built was a rural area. So they wanted to put that in there. Trying to think if there was anything else. They designed a dance room in their school, but again, that's their curriculum, you know, creating their design. So, I don't know, am I missing anything, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Gorski?
Yeah, well, there was one other thing. They put in their referendum to add solar to the roofing, but didn't do it in the interest of time. They needed to have that school built because the building of that school was dependent on all the rest of their redistricting needs. So this, I think, I think he said this year or this upcoming year, they're going to be adding solar to the roof, which would make it pretty much off the grid with electric. That was a really, really great idea that they had to put solar on the roofs. I'm sorry, Dr. Lehman?
Well, Mr. Tofano, Dr. Lehman, did you want to speak to that, or should I?
No, I was just going to comment. I think Dr. Alvik hit all the key points. They clearly designed some of the spaces based on their curriculum, and that's the approach we would take as well. You know, we, whatever STEM initiatives we had, we don't have, we have dance embedded in our physical education programs. So, you know, those spaces could be utilized for that. They have a separate kind of dance program thing, which is why they have a huge gigantic dance room in that school. But again, we could repurpose spaces like that to meet our needs.
Mr. Chiarella, I believe, had a stand-up first. Mr. Polari?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say that with my many years on Buildings and Grounds and Transportation, that LEED stands for Leadership and Energy and Environmental Design, and it's all about green building standards. So the things that you, you know, you talked about are incorporated into the building to make, to make the building as efficient and as green as possible. That's all, that's all I want to say.
Ms. Arminio?
Polari, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I think Ken stole that. That's what I wanted to kind of explain, that most of the buildings and any institutional facilities that they're designing and building out needs to be LEED certified, and that's almost a requirement of the Department of Education and many other agencies. What I want to say, first of all, first and foremost, Peter, I just want you and the Buildings and Ground Transportation committee members to understand is great initiative. I'm glad you guys are doing this, because this is much needed.
Oh, no. Mr. Polari, why do you do that to us?
Ms. Arminio, while we're waiting for Mr. Polari, may I just point out one important fact, too?
Wait, is he back? Oh, my God.
Am I back? Polari, you got cut off. You got cut off.
Am I back?
Yes.
Yes, I'm hearing a yes and a no. Can you hear me?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. No, all I'm saying is, this may be a very good initiative, maybe we need to do this, but I feel that just the other board members, and maybe even the public, there's 87 people in the public waiting to see this, maybe have another meeting, Peter, just a half an hour to highlight some of the construction, share some pictures, if you will, and get the comfort level that this is the way we want to go, and then we can engage and move to the next step. This has to be done quick. We cannot wait for each of the monthly board meetings to occur. I get that. But right now, I don't have the comfort level to say either do it or don't do it, because I don't have the data points.
Karen, please. Karen Bierman, unmute.
So in the motion, it mentions the address 227 Applegarth. I just wanted to clarify that that's the property where the Applegarth School is currently, and that's not the golf course property.
It is.
All right. The motion is really just this study that's going to help us ascertain cost, which is the key element that the public keeps trying out for, that they don't know if they want to go ahead or not go ahead with it, and they have some kind of clue as to what cost would be.
Ms. Belko? I'm sorry, Karen, are you finished? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, I do, but that's the motion is to get a study to get costs so that we can ascertain viability for progression.
Ms. Belko?
We've had a motion on the floor, and I think we've had discussion. I'd like to call the motion.
Well, okay, Mr. Gorski, just, I'm going to let him finish his statement.
I very briefly appreciate it, but it's, when you ask to call a question, it's a priority.
Right.
It's a priority motion. Is there a second to call the question? Call the question generally requires a motion and a second and a vote.
I'll second it.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
One moment, let me just record this. Ms. Belko, and seconded by Mr. Nikotinsky to call the question. Okay, so I will go to an immediate roll call.
Can I just, you read it again?
Yeah, I was just going to offer, Madam Board President, may I read this for everybody's benefit?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano moved the motion as recommended by the Building, Grounds, and Transportation Committee of the Monroe Township Board of Education to, number one, authorize and direct administration to engage in a limited design study to explore the cost of the construction of a new school facility similar to the Claremont Elementary School located in Franklin Township, New Jersey, to be constructed on land owned by the Board of Education at 227 Applegarth Road, Monroe Township. And two, authorize and direct administration to solicit proposals for professional services, including but not limited to the architect and cost engineers previously contracted by Franklin Township Board of Education that designed Claremont Elementary School for reasons of cost efficiency and consistency. And three, to authorize and direct administration to engage the district architect and engineer of record to update the project cost estimates for the additions to Barclaybrook School, Brookside School, and the Monroe Township High School. The board president, superintendent of schools, and the business administrator, board secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all steps to implement this action of the board of bid. And this is a specific cost to build this out on Applegarth property. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Polari?
No.
Mr. Rodsky?
Yes.
Ms. Siegel?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
And Ms. Arminio?
Yes, did we, Ms. Bierman, was she, yes, okay.
Just a second, yes.
Okay.
How do you vote, Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Board President, Mr. Tofano's motion passed.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, we have.
Madam President, a fair timeframe that we're looking at now that the motion has passed in terms of what the public can expect?
I think I'll discuss that with Dr. Alvik and Mr. Gorski and Dr. Lehman and Mr. Tofano, and we'll try to make it very limited and get this done, so we can present it and perhaps even ask for them to supply photographs and things of the interior and exterior of the building that's already, that they have already done. That would be my hope.
Thank you, Madam President. That makes sense.
Okay, another committee report, please?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby, just announce what committee you're reporting for, please.
Yes, I have a policy committee report.
Yes.
The policy committee met on February 9th and discussed- The policy committee met on February 9th and discussed a few policies that are on the agenda tonight for first read. Policy 0155 for committees. We added community engagement and communication to the list of standing committees. The committee also asked for committee meetings to be recorded and available on the website to be added to that policy as well. Policy 8310 Public Records. We updated the policy by changing the accounting supervisor to Assistant Business Administrator to reflect the change in job title. We added language that Oprah requests can be sent electronically. We added that the Oprah request form will be posted on the district webpage. And we added that the custodian will acknowledge receipt of Oprah requests. In Regulation 8310 Public Records, under government record, where it says information stored or maintained electronically, we added including but not limited to emails, text messages and other forms of electronic communication. Under number eight, the committee asked for the same language as the policy. Requests for access to a government record shall be in writing, hand-delivered, mailed or sent electronically. Policy 1648 Restart and Recovery Policy. Under Appendix N, the committee requested to correct the time for the Oak Tree School ending to 1255, it had been put in incorrectly to 1205. On the agenda for a second and final reading tonight is policy, I think it's 50164.6. Since there were no changes at the first reading, the committee did not make any changes, we'll discuss that. And that is my policy committee update.
Okay, any other, any other policy you wish to discuss? One minute, one minute. Did you have a question?
Yes, Ms. Arminio.
Yes, Ms. Siegel.
If I may ask a question about policy. Question about the recordings that are going to be done for the committee meetings. Are there any costs to the recordings being done, being that we have committee meetings happening on two nights? Now, I was just curious.
Mr. Gorski, do you?
Madam President, that has not been explored.
Okay, so remotely, the way we're doing it now, is this additional cost? All of our meetings now?
I do believe, there's not an additional cost for our meeting, but it's going to be an additional personnel cost.
For the recording?
Yes.
Okay, I thought we also explored a software to record. Ms. Kirby, was there a request for software to be recorded? The software to be found to be recorded?
I don't believe we did. I thought we were saying during the remote, during the remote time period, we would be doing it just like the board meeting. This WebEx meeting is recorded and, you know, it could be uploaded onto the website. And then we would explore when we were back in person, how we would record that then and post it up.
Well, there's no, during a committee meeting, there are no questions from the public. So would we be able to just have our host open the meeting and then we can close it? Or, you know, have the chairperson open it as the host and then just close it? Because do we need one of our tech people to?
I think we do need our tech people. You see the issues that we have with getting everyone online to begin with, in the beginning of the evening. I think it's important to have a tech person available, yes.
Okay, so.
Well, we have the tech person at our committee meetings. It's posting the recording of the committee meeting then just to the website.
Right, that's not an issue. What I'm talking about is if, once we go back to in-person meetings, there will be a cost because we will have to pay someone to come to the meeting to be able to report it.
Could we have that inserted perhaps if we wanted to, you know, that it will, we would have to reevaluate it or certainly revise that policy when we go back to full in-person?
I don't think that needs to be incorporated into the policy, we can just bring it back to policy at that time.
Ms. Siegel, would that be acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else?
I have one more question, Ms. Arminio. I was noticing on the policy committee agenda, there were several other policies on there and I think they were not discussed. So I just wanted to understand why they were on the agenda or if there was some reason why they were not discussed. So I just wanted to get clarity. I don't know if there were Strauss Esme alert. I just wanted to.
They were not Strauss Esme alert, we didn't have any mandated policies from Strauss Esme. What we had, the policy committee, myself and Ms. Belko, we had asked some questions regarding policies for, we had received some information, everyone had received information from school boards. And going through the documents, we were asking what policies we may have in our district relating to children, socio-emotional learning, et cetera. And Dr. Alvik had mentioned that she would put policies on the agenda that we could discuss. But we didn't, we didn't change any of those policies and the discussion never led into those specific ones. So there was no need to, there was no need to discuss them. It wasn't, we weren't asking to discuss those specific ones, but it was a collection of policies that may come into the discussion, so they were on the agenda. But it never did lead to that discussion.
Did we run out of time as well, Ms. Kirby?
Yes, we did.
We did, but I don't think we were.
Yeah, we didn't attend to it, sorry.
That's all right, Ms. Belko, did you want to make, say something? Just finish what you were saying or start.
No, we ran out of time, but we never, like Chrissy said, we never got to a point where we needed to discuss those motions, I mean, those policies. Because a discussion based off of the questions we had didn't lead down that road for those policies. So they were there in case we needed them.
Dr. Alvik, did you want to comment on that? Do you, do you want that to be?
I think they got it.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Ken, was that a motion?
Yes. No, not a motion, I have a report if we're done with.
Oh, Ms. Kirby, are you finished?
Yes, I have the community engagement report too, but Mr. Chiarella.
No, that's okay, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, the Community Engagement and Communication Committee also met on February 9th. Adina Nikotinsky was selected as the vice chair for the committee. The committee spoke about building back public trust through increasing communications. We discussed leveraging technology to increase communication. The committee asked that this district use the official district Facebook page to be used to communicate with the public. There was a discussion about Twitter, the Twitter, the district does use Twitter. I just want to note that the Twitter, the district Twitter only has 300 followers. The district Facebook page has 2,457 followers. So the committee was asking us to utilize, or the district to utilize the Facebook page more over the Twitter even, because it seems that our community in Monroe uses Facebook a lot more to communicate our information. Let's see, what else? We want to be inclusive of the community in which we all pay taxes. We want to engage community groups and stakeholders to be involved. We discussed exploring advertising opportunities to bring revenue into the district. And, oh, Dr. Lehman had explained that the community engagement and communication was at the heart of the strategic plan discussions. And he thinks that the committee would mesh together nicely with that. He said possibly the committee could then work on, work together with the short, the medium and long-term goals set up with the strategic plan process. Ms. Arminio suggested the committee review and discuss that part of the strategic plan at a future meeting. And Dr. Alvik had said that she would discuss that with the school board meeting that they had last week. And that's all I have for that update.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chiarella, I'm sorry, did anyone want to ask a question? No, we're good, Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, on February 10th, we had a finance meeting. So as we, as we already voted on tonight, we had the presentation for the comprehensive annual financial report. So I just want to thank Mr. Gorski and the office team for all the work that they put into this. I'd also like to thank Dr. Alvik and Dr. Lehman and just everyone involved with this. And especially for the fact that we had a clean opinion, which is always a great thing, so thank you. We also discussed auction of the district transportation equipment through govdeals.com. So Mr. Gorski presented a request from the Director of Transportation to offer to auction 654 passenger buses made in the years 2005 through 2008. And again, that'll be on govdeals.com, we've used them for a few years now. And we've had some, we've had some pretty good returns on them. It's been, it's been more lucrative for the district than just turning them in. And as I can attest to, I even, one year, Mr. Gorski even took us out on a little field trip so we could see the buses and the shape they were in. And so the process is that our, our team of mechanics basically strips those buses, cannibalizes them for our current active fleet. And then, and then we, and then we look to liquidate what's left. This is, we do this due to statute and, you know, the laws that tell us that we have to, we have, we have to, these buses have a limited lifetime, you know, and then we have to, we have to act upon those. So that's why we go through that process. We had an update on the free breakfast and lunch program. And so Mr. Gorski gave us a pretty good, you know, pretty detailed update on the program. In January, district serves 10,709 breakfasts over 14 days. So we're now serving 765 breakfasts and lunch meals daily, exceeding the predicted 625 breakfasts and lunches. The profit from this is now expected to be 80,000 instead of 60,000. You know, and overall, the committee was very pleased with the results. And I would say though, you know, I'm mentioning a lot of numbers here. The object, although nice to make a profit and increase profit, is really to ensure that we're providing meals for children in need, children who need them, you know, and helping parents. And this is just phenomenal. So we know there's a definite need. And, you know, I said it at the meeting and I'm going to say it again publicly, we have to make sure that there isn't a stigma attached to this. You know, I was able to see firsthand at one of our schools, I'm not going to mention the school, but there was a line of parents in line to get, to, you know, to take advantage of this program. So it's definitely needed and I'm happy that we have it. So I'm going to move on now to general discussion of the Jamesburg Agreement. So thank you, Mr. Rotsky, for coming to the, coming to the meeting with Ms. Holster, who is the Finance Chair of Jamesburg. And just explaining to us the, where we're at from our, you know, our relationship with send-receive district relationship and the, where we're at from a funding standpoint. And Mr. Rotsky was able to explain a few things to us that I think needed to be aired so that we had, we had a better understanding of the situation. Jamesburg has been over budgeted on tuition beyond the actual cost for the last few years. They paid an additional $100,000 out of the surplus to get the indebtedness down. And they, and we have the projected results, which would continue to reduce the debt obligation will be to keep paying that down over time. So they've been paying for, actually paying for more students than they're sending in order to ensure that that happens. And so when we started out with this arrangement, Jamesburg was $1.9 million in debt and now we're at about 1.5 million. So we're, you know, it's still, it's still a work in progress. We're going to have more exact numbers in the, at the March meeting. But I just want to say again, I said it at the, at our finance meeting, but I think it really is important to say publicly that the Jamesburg students are our students, they're our kids. So it's important for us to understand that. So no matter what the, the financial obligation is, no matter what the state tells us that we can and can't do, no matter what our personal feelings could be towards me or Paul, well, Mr. Rotsky or any of us, the bottom line is that we're talking about kids here. And it's our job to make sure that there's, that there's no differentiation between our kids and their kids. They're all our kids, we need to educate them. And, and make sure that they're educated properly and treat them like they're our kids, because they are. And, and that's all I'm going to say with regards to that. And that's my, that's my presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Chiarella, I see Mr. Polari, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Ken, that was a high note that you ended on, so I can't top that. Completely agree with you about the same, you know, everybody that comes to our schools is to care for our kids and we need to provide an equal opportunity. Couple of questions. And the break was still, I remember that last meeting, we were very skeptical about the success of it and how it's going to come, and I was one of them. And I can tell you that I'm glad to see the number of people coming and actually benefiting from it. Because, you know, sometimes you don't have those data points to make the right decision. In terms of the buses, you talked about six buses, you said, Mr. Chiarella? You're muted.
654 passenger buses, yes.
654. In terms of our fleet, this question is for Mr. Gorski. That does not, I think we put in for 10 buses, if I recall correctly. Mr. Gorski, the net change is not going to impact our transportation system, I assume. But what is the net?
We have a fleet of about 70 vehicles now. And in the 2122 budget, we're budgeting for six new ones. So we'll be at equilibrium.
All right, the last question is the township payments. I did see some correspondence, are we getting the full payment that we need to get from the township to make sure that our staff and teachers and everybody's getting paid on time?
Madam President?
Mr. Gorski, did you want to answer that question now?
Sure, yes.
Are you going to talk about the tax shortfall?
Very, very, yep, I have that information. We were underpaid in our February monthly payment, which is approximately $19 million for February, by $5 million. So we received 14 instead of 19. I got a call from Mr. George Lang Township CFO explaining the shortfall. The reason for it, according to the township, was because of reasons of COVID impacting and impairing the collections of tax revenues as well as the snowstorm, which prevented some people from coming out and paying their taxes. We were advised that that $5 million shortfall would be made good in about two weeks' time. As of today, I do not have that payment yet. Mrs. Allen checked the bank account today, nothing was transferred. So I expect that shortly, otherwise we will be making a call to the township. We are liquid, we have enough money in savings to cover this $5 million deficit for now. But we do need it to be made good sometime soon. Also, Ms. Arminio, pursuant to your request, I asked for the percentage of tax collections from the township. The question for everybody's understanding, edification was, what is the percentage of residents paying their taxes? And previously, it was presented to me that it was about 97%. I did not get a response yet with an updated number. So I will bring that to the board's attention as soon as I receive it.
Mr. Chiarella, if I may, my concern about the $5 million and us being liquid, we have a reserve fund. My concern is that reserve fund has about $7 million in it, is that correct? I don't know if you want to, if I'm misstating what the fund is, it's really not, it's an investment fund?
In this case, we're talking about cash in two accounts, checking and our savings account. So we basically just blew our savings account to cover this. And we need to get that money back shortly because if we, we don't have a large amount of cash on hand to cover shortfalls like this, if they continue.
Well, that's my. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to say an anomaly now and then, we can get through on our savings account. But it would be unhealthy for it to continue to get worse.
And that is what concerns me because we don't, and I think in my email to you, I asked if it was a prediction that we would be getting it or a guarantee. And I'm not sure that if they don't have it, they can still defer it. Is the governors in March, I believe the governor said the municipalities can defer taxes to the schools? Is that still, maybe Mr. Gagliardi can answer that? Is that still something that's active, Mr. Gagliardi?
So the law without regard to COVID and executive orders did provide some flexibility, did tolerate some flexibility in terms of the towns paying you the monies it collects. But the also, the law is also very clear that that money is collected and held in trust for you. No different than if you were the trustee of a fund for a relative or a friend and had other bills to pay and decided to use some of the money in that trust for your friend in order to pay your utility bills or your credit card bill. So while there is some flexibility provided, my expectation So while there is some flexibility provided, my expectation, having seen this before, is that those monies are being used elsewhere as defined by the town as a priority, without getting into the competing, um, needs of a community, schools, police, fire, et cetera. Uh, my recommendation, uh, in answer to the question you asked, Madam President, which is, is it a promise or a guarantee, right? That was the question. Um, is that, uh, the district, uh, and I can provide the very specific language to Mr. Mr. Gorski, send a man letter to the town saying that the board, in essence, budgeted for these monies and is counting on it. The reason I'm advising you to do that is because that's a prerequisite, if heaven forbid, legal action is necessary in order to turn that promise into a guarantee, to use your word.
Okay. I mean, I would hate to, um, you know, uh, seem adversarial toward the municipality, but I think to cover our costs, it is, i- if it's a normal procedure, um, I think maybe we should, we should do it without, um, you know, and we can say it nicely, I, I'm sure Mr. Gorski is very eloquent in his writing and speech, so, and you can certainly help draft that, I, I, I would hope.
Yeah, it's a very straightforward letter. It simply says that you have legal obligations that require the payment of the money, insistent with the schedule, uh, you, to which you agreed with the town. Because just as they have obligations in terms of, you think about your staff obligated by law to pay them, the, uh, health benefits and other benefits, the utilities, you have obligations, and so the law requires you to articulate that to the town because it's a trustee of money it's collecting on your behalf. So it's not, it's not, when I say demand letter, I don't mean it's threatening, I mean it's a sort of a specific hoop that you should jump through in order to make sure you get the money.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone in the, um, is anyone at the board, Mr. Rutske?
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back, and I just wanted to thank Ken for, uh, first of all, his summary tonight of what the Jamesburg tuition, um, agreement had, what it's been and how it's been working. Um, nice job. And, and the opportunity to come to the finance meeting and go over it. Uh, I really did appreciate the opportunity. Carrie Anne also was, was thankful. I kind of gave all the numbers, um, but she was right there with me, uh, and we were both appreciative of being invited into the meeting. The one thing I wanted to say was, at the meeting, I did go over just verbally through columns and sort of laid it all out, and at the very end, uh, Ms. Bierman had asked if there was a spreadsheet that I could send, so I did formulate that spreadsheet together. Um, and this afternoon, I sent it to, um, President Arminio.
Right.
So, so she has it. Um, I think it's cleaner than, than when I just read it all off and we, and people were writing down. Um, so I told Michelle, you know, whatever questions come up, feel free to ask. Once we do get those numbers next month, I'll be able to change the forecasted column to actual column, and we'll see what nineteen, twenty really, uh, turns out to be, but for all intents purposes, it looks like it's going to be about a five hundred thousand dollar reduction, uh, in the indebtedness, which, which I think we're all looking forward to. So, um, I wait with bated breath for those numbers to become, you know, the audited numbers to become official, and, uh, we'll put another year behind us. So again, thanks very much, uh, Mr. Chiarella and, uh, Madam President Arminio.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske, thank you.
And I like what you said about the students too, first and foremost, uh, it's always good to come back and have that reminder on every aspect of what we do at these meetings, whether it's, you know, the Jamesburg Monroe or, or anything else for that matter, the free breakfast and lunches, it is about the students and, and, you know, we, we say every meeting, we should focus more on what the students are doing, what they need, how they're reacting to the, the environment, um, and somehow we all get lost in, in a lot of other things. So, nice, nice, nice job bringing it all back to that, so thanks again.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Chiarella? Okay, shall we move on? Any other, yes, Ms. Belko.
I have the curriculum committee report. Tonight, we held our first meeting, uh, at six P M. We began the meeting with the vice person, vice chairperson selection, and, uh, Mr. Polori is the vice chair of the curriculum committee, um, for us. Um, I'm not going to read all the notes, I'm going to try to give all the highlights, and if people have questions, I'll be happy to, um, answer them. Yeah, what, one of the first things that I wanted to, to report out is that there have been some curriculum questions that were sent to the public, and they also were also posted on Facebook, and they were, they not sent to the public, they were sent to the board and administration, and I happened to be having a meeting with Dr. Lehman at the time that they came in and we did discuss it, and he, um, actually came back to me and said that there is a plan, and there'll be a presentation at next month's, um, curriculum committee meeting. Um, I don't know the details of that, but, um, there will be a presentation on that, so there, there'll be a better understanding of, of some of that curriculum. We had a presentation by, um, Mr. Kalella about the formation of an adelante club. It's, um, adelante is a, um, is a Spanish or Latin word, please forgive me if I get this wrong, um, meaning moving forward. And so it's a club that where they want to promote inclusive, inclusive and community outreach. The students themselves came to the, um, to teachers, they, um, watch, it's a club where they can learn about Hispanic and Latinx heritage and culture, they want to do social gatherings, talk about how they celebrate holidays. It is, um, one of the interesting things about it is, one, it'll be open to all students, so you don't have to be in a Spanish class, or you don't have to be Spanish speaking or Latin speaking or any, um, of those, um, languages. You can be any student in the school. One of the most, um, interesting things is that they want to help improve parent engagement because the, um, the, the primary language in the houses is on English, but the students, so the students are usually the ones, um, who are saying that this is, you know, they're teaching the parents what's going on. So that was a really, um, big part about this committee that I thought was, um, and the other committee members actually thought it was a good, um, a good idea. So, um, that, that was presented for, um, for the board's, um, approval tonight. Um, the next thing we talked about was, uh, Mr. Higgins, the vice principal at the Monarch Middle School, talked about, um, a new, uh, curriculum called Class Craft, and it's a, it was an interactive application that they use. I guess it's not a curri-, I guess it is a curriculum, I, forgive me if, um, a little, um, off here, my first committee report. So, um, it's to enhance student engagement in, um, academics and social emotional learning, or SEL. And it's sort of a reward system through playing a game. So, um, he used the word gamification to basically, um, describe what it is, and it helps students motivate them to achieve certain goals in their learning, they get certain points, and with these certain points, their character gets certain prizes, they can, I guess, have different costumes and different pieces into their game. And, um, it's, uh, basically, they meet certain goals, and the teacher, the teacher from the classroom sets this up for the students to achieve these goals, and they can be recognized outside of the classroom doing something nice, and it's basically kind of a reward reinforcement type of thing. Uh, currently, they're doing a pilot with this, and it's complimentary, um, students and staff licenses through the end of this, um, fiscal school year, twenty twenty-one, June. It's, um, they have the features of all the apps, there's a couple of features, but it could do about a hundred to two hundred students. And basically, it's not a distraction, it's kind of interwoven into, into the classroom work and interwoven in through the teacher's track. So they're, um, moving forward, there would be a cost and a fee to this, so the board will have to consider if we would want to go through this beyond the twenty twenty-one school year. So if we need a, a motion, or, or maybe we can bring this back and discuss this, um, at next month to look and see if it fits the budget, I don't know, um, if that's what we want to do there. The, um, the next thing we talked about, we had, um, Ms. Gascow from the math, uh, department and math and sciences department, uh, brought in the new curriculum standards and the new curriculum for the second course and four classes, uh, in the dynamic math series. So this is dynamics of geometry, and basically, it's the same geometry lessons that everyone else gets taught at a different, uh, with different, um, methods and instruction, uh, use is done with project, um, based learning, they have differentiated activities so that the actual, um, classes where, um, are, um, real life situations, projects are, um, where, where I lost my spot, sorry, guys. Um, so then there's also, um, technology sections that can be embedded in the remote session. So what they did was, with this curriculum, they wrote it and, and moved it forward as if we were in school, but what they added to this curriculum and, um, is that they added technology section, so if we have to, on a dime, go back to remote learning and we're using this curriculum, there is already curriculum written and in here so that they can go through with that. Um, and, um, they use a lot of different, um, places to do, uh, their things. It also meets what, um, the Q S A requirements where it's cross-curricular, so word problems, L A L, that they, they do a lot of different things there. So that, so they updated it to include all of the things that they needed for, um, for the dynamics of geometry to bring it up to the current standard that, um, the state has put out. There was a presentation by, um, Randy Flauem, um, about a curriculum project called Practical Communication. This would be for the TAPS program, which is the transition to, um, adult program for the, um, the students that have aged out of the, uh, nine to twelve. These are the, um, the super students, super seniors, I, I'm not sure, there's so many different acronyms for it. Um, it's a curriculum for students, and it's designed to give them instructional opportunities in social and, um, emotional, um, standards and situations. So one of the things that, um, uh, Mr. Flauem talked about was, normally, the TAP students are out of the building and they don't have a instructional time on these, um, on these topics, speaking and listening skills, cooperation, interpersonal communication, conflict management. Um, with the online learning, they have had time to work on these skills, so they've developed this curriculum that will help the students meet social competence, competency, now my mouth is, my head's not talking tonight, um, basically through direct instruction and practice of the conversation and the skills. It's taught in, in units and modules, and the students, um, get will, the goal, I guess, is to get, is for the students to take this out into the community-based learning situations that they go into, where they can practice those skills and work on them, um, through that. The other thing, um, that was reported was, Dr. Lehman reported about an interesting project that tech is actually working on, and they're engaging to present the high school course of studies document as an interactive, in an interactive digital format. So, um, I'm kind of interested to see this, um, document, um, come to life, because right now, it's, it's kind of a, um, just an, uh, PDF, hard to, hard to kind of follow, but with it being interactive and being able to, for the students and the parents to be able to work with it, um, and make it work for them so they can build their course template for high school, um, I think it's going to be a good thing and a good change, um, for the department. And that is my report.
Thank you. Anyone else or any questions for Ms. Belko? We good? Okay, um, the next.
Michelle.
Yes.
Personnel.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nikotinsky.
I'm going to be short and sweet, so, um, we reviewed some leave search processes, uh, we reviewed some vacancy reports, and we will be reviewing eight resumes for legal counsel in closed session tonight, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, anyone else? Have to raise your hand or speak up. Okay, seeing none, uh, we will move to public forum, and before we begin, um, maybe, uh, Mr. Pulsonelli can post that phone number again. But I would like to say, last month, I was a little lenient with the public forum, allowing questions and comments that were really not on the agenda. Uh, so tonight, for the first forum, it will be open to agenda items only. Um, as you know, uh, this board is very interested in transparency, we want to hear everybody, but to move, uh, it's already nine thirty, and thank you for waiting, uh, but we want to move the business of the board forward, so please, uh, raise your hand, it will be, uh, Mr., you know, uh, Personelli will let you in and state your name, your address, and, and begin, and please make sure it's an agenda item at this time. You will have an opportunity in the second, uh, public forum to speak about anything else. Thank you.
Ms. Arminio, to that point, I have three electronically submitted statements, questions that, in my opinion, meet the criteria for the second public forum, so, uh, I'm going to hold those for the.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pulsonelli, can you begin? I see that we have a hundred people in the audience.
And would you like to be made public with your video? Mr. Boy?
Uh, no, no video necessary.
Okay.
Get your name and address for the record.
Okay, it's, uh, Doug Boy, I live at Four Tamarack Road. Uh, I'm assuming that, uh, anything mentioned in the, in the, uh, various, uh, committee reports would be considered part of the agenda, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, well, in discussing the Claremont School, uh, even though I think all of you understand what kind of school you are talking about here, I don't think the public does. Uh, and I listen closely so that I can try to, uh, see if I could figure that out. Uh, so is this an elementary school or is this a middle school? That's one question I have. And, uh, also clarify whether or not, uh, the school is be, would be built on the property that is part of the current Applegar School. Uh, secondly, uh, in the motion made by Mr. Tofano, uh, there was, there was mention of additions or alterations to Barclay Brook, uh, Brookside, uh, and the high school. Uh, I'm a little confused as to why there would be additions at Barclay Brook and Brookside, because in looking over the enrollments in the various elementary schools, I noticed that over the past four years, enrollments have dropped at Woodland, Middle Lake, Brookside, and Barclay Brook. Uh, so I'm not really clear as to why we would, uh, need to make additions, uh, and maybe instead of that, uh, just do some redistricting. I know how unpopular that is, but nevertheless, it's a little confusing to me. Thank you.
Um, um, Mr. Tofano, I'm going to ask Dr. Alvik to, uh, if you will, Dr. Alvik to, you know, make some of those.
Um, Claremont School is an elementary school, so that would be what we were looking at. Yes, we are looking at the Applegar site, the current Applegar site, so it would replace the Applegar School. And the questions about additions to Barclay Brook, Brookside and the high school, part of the discussion at D G and T was that we would remove the sixth grade from the middle school and take them back to the elementary schools. That would negate a need for any additions at the middle school site. Um, but by doing that, it's adding the numbers in our elementary school. So based on the most recent demographic report, we're looking at about thirty-three hundred students, oh, um, addition, additional, um, within the next five to ten years unhoused. So currently, we have over fifteen hundred students unhoused. Within the next five to ten years, we're looking at thirty-three hundred students unhoused. So by looking at adding additions to Barclay Brook and Brookside, it would help if we, but as we pulled students out, the sixth grade out of the middle school.
Okay.
Thank you very much, that's a very clear explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Boy. Mr. Pulsonelli, next?
Would you like to be made, to be able to show video, sir? Mr. Fabiano, are you there?
Yep, I didn't hear the name. Uh, no, no video necessary, Brian Fabiano, nineteen Patricia Place. So I would start first with a comment that I heard Michelle make tonight, um, where, uh, she said, you know, I want to be careful not to be adversarial. I think the times of this board being adversarial are a thing of the past. Uh, the town, yeah, is, is largely responsible for getting us into this mess, uh, and it's time that they, and they, they, they hand over the money that's due to the, the schools to, you know, to operate here. So I'm not, I'm not worried about this board being nice. Uh, they owe us the money and, and, you know, this board has been nice for way too long, and that's part of the problem why we don't have, why we have the problems that we have and, and why we haven't called the town out, you know, for the overbuilding and, and, and the issues that we have. So, you know, I don't agree with you there, Michelle, but, you know, that's that. Um, I have a couple of questions, uh, in regards to, uh, I have a couple of questions in regards to, you know, student growth. We talked about in the committee meetings around Mr. Chirello's meeting about the enrollment numbers for Jamesburg. It's actually, I can see that the trend is going down for Jamesburg in terms of numbers, even though they may be overpaying. Our student enrollment seems to be trending up. I'm wondering, you know, what the current numbers are for the high school students' enrollment. I know that this question is often asked and it's not easy to get a number on how many kids are actually in the high school. And the reason why I ask this is obviously you understand the law for sending districts and having representation on the board. You know, should Jamesburg's numbers drop below 10%, the law says they don't have the right to have representation on our Board of Education. So I just want to make sure that we're following the law, NJ SA 18A, colon 38, dash 8.2. So I would like some color on what the actual numbers are and how we manage that to make sure that we are following the laws in regards to representation. So perhaps you can answer that. In regards to the audit, you know, I've seen many audits in my life, very few perfect audits. I'll give you this one if it's a perfect audit, but usually there are always areas for improvement. I'd be careful to use the word hero as it relates to our accounting team because I very rarely hear this board refer to our teachers or kids as heroes, given what's going on in the COVID world. We pay our accounting team well to get it right. It's their job to get it right and I'm glad to see that they did get it right. So that's my comments there. In terms of communication, we talked, I saw the committee meetings, I liked the engagement committee pushing for more communication into the community. I think it's great that we use the Facebook page like many other towns do. I think, you know, this board talks a lot about transparency and our ability to see what's going on. I think we know we need to up the public presence. I'm wondering, and this question's for Dr. Alvik, given, you know, we're talking about communication and transparency, given the recent talk around town and, you know, the issue of the acts of racism that happened recently in the schools, I believe it happened on Zoom. I'm wondering why no communication was sent out to us parents or the town from the administration to establish your point as it relates to, you know, that we don't stand to this or, you know, whatever, you know, the administration would take, what your action would be and, you know, how we stand as a district to these type of acts. I'm surprised it would be so quiet. And lastly, I would just make this comment. You know, we talk a lot about, you know, a lot about, you know, the board, you know, having to, you know, practice good ethics and there's a time and place. Oh, I thought, can you answer my questions? I'll defer to the second part.
Yeah. Dr. Alvik, do you have a comment on the investigation? If that's still ongoing?
It's an ongoing investigation, so I'm not going to comment on it, but Ms. Chanley did send out a communication to the school community, to the middle school community.
And the other question?
I don't have the numbers on that. Mr. Gorski, do you have the enrollment numbers for the Jamesburg question?
Madam President, I do not have those numbers tonight for this meeting. We will present that in March, including ADE and the ASSA counts for enrollment. But I will tell you that that statutory reference is familiar to us and we do check that. And as of recent, Jamesburg met the threshold for a member on the Board of Education. That is something that is reviewed periodically.
So, Mr. Rutz, well, we're not going to engage too much in that. I would just say that for, again, transparency, if we're meeting, you know, we're keeping in mind that legal aspect of the enrollment, then we should have the enrollment numbers on a regular basis. So, no? Okay. So we'll wait.
Ms. Arminio, the enrollment numbers are in the board agenda.
Yes, I'm talking about having the enrollment numbers for Jamesburg into Monroe, into the receiving end.
Madam President, if that's a focus point for the board or yourself, we could certainly add that to a committee agenda item or even a board discussion, but without that, no one's going to have those numbers handed.
Okay. Now, I just thought that when you said that you were keeping up with the, with the law that, you know, and the 10%, that in order to do that, you would have to have the Jamesburg enrollment numbers. But you know what? I think at this point, we will wait till March and we'll have that, we'll open that discussion again. Anything else for Mr. Fabiano? Any other answers? No? Okay.
I think that was his questions.
Okay. Next, Mr. Pulcinelli.
Please state your name and address for the board. Mr. Vieux?
Oh, yes. Hi. Did you call Ravichandran?
Can you spell?
Would you like to be made? Would you like video, sir?
No, no, not necessarily. Thanks for taking my call. Thanks for the initiative for the new school. I have a few comments specifically to Ms. Arminio. So last year, at on the same time, probably in February, some of the board members went to Edison School and they looked at the construction out there and they came back and there was a discussion specifically around getting these architects and getting multiple people so there's no conflict of interest. And yet again, today, there was only one bidder or one architect that you guys were considering and there was a discussion around conflict of getting more bidders, right? So my question, yes, number one, you know, why aren't you guys doing the same thing? Why are you just getting this one architect? The second one is, Mr. Tofano said that Claremont School was, or the architect was cheap. You pay peanuts, you get monkeys. You can't compromise cost but quality. This is a school. So you've got to strike a balance between quality and cost. And the second thing, he mentioned that the construction was fast and inexpensive. In this town itself, you know, there are builders who build really fast and I won't name them, I'm sure you guys know who they are. They build so fast that the quality is so bad and you can't really compromise on that as well. And so I just feel that we're back to square one. So if you can answer in terms of, you know, why you guys are not getting more bidders, that'd be great.
I think I'm just going to make a quick, I think that the way Mr. Tofano posed it is not exactly that we're looking for cheap. I think we were looking for a comparison between that specific type of building and the, I believe we have a $69 million design prospect for the same portion of land. So we were looking to see if there would be any reduction in price to build a similar property. I think if it came down to, we would have to certainly go out for bids for a particular different design. But let's face it, we haven't gone out. We've had the same design team for quite a while for our other building designs. Mr. Gorski or Dr. Alvik, or even Dr. Lehman, if you have.
And I think he also brought up the Edison Schools. That was a different, that's a different project because the Edison Schools were modular trailers, for modular construction. So that's a different project. We would have found an entirely new module.
Right. I think what the board, and even last year's board and this year's board, what we're trying to do is present different scenarios, different options. And no one's, I don't think anybody wants to do anything on the cheap, but we've had two failed referendums. So I think we have to, we have an obligation to seek out different avenues of construction. That's not to say that we will go with all of them, but it's just to point out that we have to have discussions of different ways to build schools. And certainly, we want a safe and effective school. So I think that that would be the bottom line, but trying to present to the public a way to have our facilities expanded while getting the referendums voted, you know, approved.
Absolutely. I give it that. And what I'm saying is a process in place because last year, I distinctly remember Mr. Valuri mentioning about a car example to illustrate that you just can't take something by face value. You have to understand what actually entails in the design process and so on.
I think we are actually trying to do that. Mr. Gorski, it's time, it's time up. We will take that into consideration. No one wants anything cheaply done. May I ask for the next caller, please?
Mr. Olesky, would you like to be made visual?
No, no video needed.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Michael Olesky. I live at 50 Mayberry Avenue here in Monroe. I've got a few questions I want to ask. I'll ask them all and just ask that you folks do the best you can to answer them. First one I wanted to ask is, can anything be done such that the first public forum is held before any board action is taken and certainly sometime earlier than, let's see, what is it, 9:45 PM? That's question number one. Question number two, very important. I'd like to know whether or not the district actually has any type of a written remaining life assessment that's been done of the existing Applegar School. And the reason I ask about that because, just so you know, in private industry, if somebody was considering retiring a major asset, which is certainly the Applegar School, there would certainly have to be a written report summarizing all the issues and concerns and, of course, at the same time, addressing whether or not that that particular asset could actually be renovated rather than just retired. And the last comment I wanted to make, this is just a reminder, I know a few past BGNT meetings, there's been some mention made of the long laundry list of major maintenance projects that need to be funded in the district the next five to 10 years. And at least I've been thinking that they really need to be further defined regarding cost and schedule. And perhaps comparing with working on a referendum plan, the same consultant that we might hire in the future could be charged with developing a major maintenance plan for the district. Because certainly, the public needs to know what they'll be asked to fund for both new construction, the capital referendum, and major maintenance as time goes forward. Thank you, Merch.
Thank you, Mr. Olesky. Mr. Gorski, did you want to just go through some of that? Start with Applegar.
Sure.
And I do think that over the years, we've had discussions of what it requires for Applegar. Perhaps we could put it into one report.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Teig has previously presented to the board on multiple occasions that Applegar as a whole, with the exception of some recent wings that have been added to the school, is completely beyond its useful life. And by that, he defines that as the core systems of the school. The sewage pipes, the roof, the windows, the HVAC system, parking lots, I can go on and on, are all beyond their useful life. And because of that, Applegar School was addressed in the initial high school referendum, if I'm correct. I think there were improvements at Applegar School that was part of that initial high school project that was defeated and then those items for other areas were taken out. Mr. Olesky's comments that this should be part of a replacement plan, couldn't agree with him more. That is what is the long-range facility plan. That's a five-year outlook that the state requires where districts identify their capital needs. But what is deficient in that report is the financing ability of districts to meet those obligations because there isn't one as part of that plan. You could either budget for projects in your general fund every year with the school budget where it's competing with all of the other demands of the district, or you could put it out on a referendum where it passes or it doesn't pass. So those are your two financing options for it. Applegar is beyond its useful life. There are some salvageable wings and we have tried to address that in the past.
Can I, I'm going to speak, I'm going to speak to the public portion, Mr. Olesky. I would like nothing more than to have an earlier public portion. But I think that when we have presentations and when we have information that the public should have, and we would definitely want the public to be informed of that, especially like something critical like the audit. So very often, if you have the public portion before that, people object to the fact that, you know, well, actually, we voted on it already, so I think I'm mistaken. We probably should have a public forum immediately after the presentation. But also, we want the committees to give their information. So if you do have any, if the public does have any questions, they will be able to ask it. It's a tough situation. We want to give the public as quickly as possible, but we should go through some information before the public talks to the agenda. We'll try to keep working that out. It's a project that's going to continue to plague us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Next.
Please state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, this is Pradeep. Can you hear me?
Would you like to be made visual?
4J Place in Monroe. So this is regarding the last year financials and audit. So I was going through one of the particular transactions, the Jamesburg transportation. And Madam President, I'm going to tell you, this has nothing to do with the Jamesburg. This is completely with the Monroe Township School District, how our accounting and auditing are. Okay? So until February 2020, we've been charging the Jamesburg an amount of $19,181 for their transportation needs. But from March to June, we charged a very less amount. So in total, we have given a discount of around $30,000. So I would like to know what are all the savings that we made and how much percentage we give them as a discount on the transportation. And there was a note specifically on one of the particular invoice. On, it says like 2020 JBT or seven to 10, and it clearly says they are giving 10% discount on transportation costs for April, May, June, and half of the month. So even if you calculate the 10% discount for three and a half months, they should have been charged like a total of $185,098 for the whole year. But our district charged only $157,460. So I would like to know what happened with the difference of $27,638.
So what you're asking is regarding the transportation cost charge to Jamesburg and a 10% discount that you've seen. Okay. Mr. Gorski, can you answer that?
Yeah. Ideally, it should be a 10% discount, but it's more than, way more than 10% discount. And I would like to know how much we saved as our district and then how much we extended to our sister district, Jamesburg, and then I would like to see the details.
Okay. Okay. Can you shed some light on that, Mr. Gorski?
Yes. Ms. Arminio, Mr. Milam submitted a Oprah request for a lot of documents related to Jamesburg schools, including tuition and also transportation. That was fully satisfied. And then a board member requested of the superintendent some specific information from those Oprah requests. So what I reported to Dr. Alvik, there's a lot of feedback here. I don't know what's going on.
I don't know where that's coming from.
But I'll read to you what I sent to Dr. Alvik in part, and then certainly she contributed to the response. But during the period of April 2020, the state, when the state required closures of school districts, legislation named A3904 provided that in addition to maintaining the salaries of school employees for people contracted units, that a district must continue to make payments for contracted services to providers and public service providers. We reported about this to the board previously. The Ed Service Commission is an example of one. The law also required districts to make a reasonable effort to renegotiate contracts and agreements with providers. Fixed costs of bus lease payments and salaries must continue to be paid to the providers. However, variable costs like fuel and tolls could be renegotiated because the provider However, variable costs like fuel and tolls could be renegotiated because the provider may not have incurred these costs during the closure. Okay, so that was the case in Monroe. We were not running our bus fleet. We paid the bus driver salaries. We paid their health benefits, and we paid the leases on the buses. But we did not incur costs for tolls and fuel. The Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission, for example, negotiated a 40% reduction in contracted costs with private bus companies and passed a reduced savings to school districts, except in one or two cases where the contractors took them to court and it was 20%. Just like the contracted services provided by the Ed Service Commission to Monroe was discounted to 40%, Monroe had an obligation to renegotiate the contract for transportation services with Jamesburg. I received a call from Jamesburg's business administrator requesting that we engage in such a discussion on a reduction of fee. And working with the director of transportation, I calculated that our fuel costs and tolls warranted a 10% reduction in Jamesburg's bill, far less than was negotiated by the Ed Service Commission to Monroe. We reached an agreement, a 10% reduction, or as this gentleman is calling it, a discount, was applied to the bill. So that I'm not in a situation in clear language that I'm, I'm charging a district for fuel and tolls that we did not incur as the provider. That would have been unethical, and we passed a relief for those items to Jamesburg. That was in, that was commensurate with the law and statute and the guidance that came from the Department of Education.
Okay, and I don't re, and forgive me for forgetting. I don't remember, was that ever discussed in either finance or full board? Did we discuss that?
The law and the requirement to renegotiate contracts and pay fixed staff costs was discussed at a public meeting more than once. The discount on this bill falls under the spirit of the law and the requirement of the law and the statutory responsibilities for a school business administrator.
Okay.
I, I constantly, let me just miss my one.
I'm sorry.
I constantly negotiate purchase orders with vendors, which is how we got a 35% reduction in our food service management fee, as we talked about before. If a service isn't provided in full, we negotiate a discount or something off. That's in the taxpayer's interest. And in this interest here, this was fairness, because I wasn't going to charge Jamesburg for fuel and tolls that we never incurred that would be ripping them off.
So we've also, as a district, saved on fuel and tolls our own self, aside from the Jamesburg? Okay. All right. Has Mr. Malon time expired?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next.
Aziz, please state your name for board.
Sarah Aziz, 3 Long Slott Drive.
Would you like to be made visual?
Sure. Hello?
You're there.
Okay. I have some questions about the design study discussed in the BG and T committee report. Specifically, I know that the Claremont School costs around 38 mil, 38 and a half million dollars. That's a 2014 cost, so I would expect that a similar school built into 2021 would be much more expensive, especially if it, it has a better HVAC system. And my recommendation is that for this design study includes four projects. It, you know, new Appleguard School additions onto Brookside and, and Barkley Brook and the high school. And so I think that when these, the costs are estimated, that the board should get a breakout of each project, rather than like a lump sum figure for referendum for all four projects. Because my concern is it could cost, you know, well over $100 million. And there's no evidence that the district has ever passed a referendum over $100 million. I also, I just have a question as to whether all, I mean, regarding the policy committee, I have a question as to whether all bylaws and policies that are being changed in this committee are being subject to attorney review, because I think that attorney review is very important.
Um, I think it, it was the intention of the board to parse out all of the different all of, all of the different.
Yes. We, we actually, when we, when we presented it last May, when we presented the, the different options, we broke it out at that point also. So the Barkley Brook, Brookside, and High School additions are really just to get an updated cost. Those, those, those were already designed, and then to get the cost for the new school.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Alva.
Our policies, our policies subject to attorney review. Yes, they are. I did speak with Mr. Gagliari at the after the policy committee meeting and went over any of the changes.
All right, thank you. Very, we're very vigilant and diligent. Next.
Mr. DePiero, please state your name and residence for the board.
Sure, my name is Tross DePiero, 404 Spotswood gravel hill road. Thank you. First, I want to say to the board, I'm very concerned on what I'm, what I'm hearing about this payment of the 19 million and that you only receive 14 million and you use all your reserves to pay for teachers, administration, contracts, and obligations. So my, my question would be, when is the next payment from the township actually due?
Did you want to ask another question, Mr. DePiero? Or shall we just answer that one?
And my, and in the past, I remember last year that Mr. Gorski made a comment about a percentage due, I believe it was by July 1st, that there was a certain percentage of the budget amount that needed to be paid from the township taxpayers to the Board of Education. Because I'm, I'm always asking questions from our tax collector on how much do we collect? And I've, I've always been told, as Mr. Gorski said, the numbers were 97% of what was, was expected to be collected. Now I'm hearing that there's a $5 million shortfall, and that's a big concern, because to run the Board of Education, you guys need your money, and we need, we need to keep this Board of Education going in the right direction. And that's, that's my big concern.
Ms. Armenio?
Yes, please, Mr. Gorski.
To answer Mr. DePiero's question, the next tax payment is due to the district on March 12th, and it's for $7.4 million.
Thank you very much. Because as a councilman, I do see the, the bill list, but we do not see the payments that are getting wired. And I know these payments are being wired, and I'm just concerned as a taxpayer that we're paying our taxes, and I know that our staff at the township is doing their job, and our BA, including with our CFO, they do an exceptional job. And I'm sure there has to be a reason why this $5 million was short. And I'm, I'm going to ask, I will ask tomorrow on, on that question exactly when I'm asking you guys on the payment, because we need to keep everything going together as, as a team, from our mayor, council, and our Board of Education as, and a team, we have to work on the same page. So I wanted to also find out how much money was collected in the 2020 from the CARE Act. Do you have that number handy, Mike?
Mr. Gorski?
Yes. That information was presented in the comprehensive annual financial report. Bear with me, let me just find that page for you.
I thought it was in the 70s.
Well, it's looking, Michelle, I just wanted to say, I think the, the board moving forward on a direction for a new school, just to get the study done, I, I want to commend you guys for moving forward on that. It's very important. I think that in the past, we missed, we missed the boat, and now the cost is definitely going to be more to our taxpayers on, on moving in the right direction for a new school. The school's 1936, and it's time.
Ms. Armenio. To the gentleman's question, that's on page 115 of the comprehensive annual financial report, that the CARES Act was $71,577,000. And that was, was all spent by June 30.
You mean 71, 77, you said 71 million?
I wish it was 71 million, but that's, that's okay. All right, have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr.
Madam President, if I may interject for one second, it, we, some of us have been sitting at this meeting since 6 o'clock. It's about 10:10 now. I know Ken Chirawa, and I've been sending you messages, looking for a bio, bio break at some point of time, but I don't mean to interrupt the, the public session. I just want to bring your attention.
I didn't wear a diaper. I didn't wear an adult diaper today.
I need a bio break, okay. Mr. Pulcinelli, can you tell me how many people are waiting in line?
I see three.
Three more?
Two, I'm sorry, two.
Let's do two more, and then we'll take a break. Thank you.
Prakash Prabha, please state your name for the record.
Prakash Prabha, can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Yeah, yes, please, thank you. Prakash Prabha, 33 Dunhill Drive. Good evening, everyone. Regarding Jamesburg, they are our children. We know that. What we are looking at is governor visited Jamesburg, and all our legislatures visited Jamesburg two or three years back. They are well-funded. Want to know what is the cost per student there and how the money is spent? Okay, that's what we are looking at. And how much is the cost per student for us in Monroe, and how we can balance it out? That's it. So I don't want to ask, answer for that. What is the cost per student in Jamesburg? Let us find out and let us know. Second thing is, as far as the expansion of the school is concerned, I'm happy the Board of Education is moving towards the change and thinking out of the box. And there were good questions, and there were good discussions. I hope the public asking some questions have heard that. We are looking at the cost and efficiency here, and this limited evaluation is under the law allowed. We need not have to have bids. Mr. Goske explained it. If the people have not heard it, let them hear it, and don't repeat the question. But I'm okay. The people call back, it is late, and it's fine. But I think it's, and I saw the good majority voting on that. That's great. And questions were great, clarifications were great. Next to the curriculum committee, good start. What I'm looking at, there's a shortage of electricians and plumbing. So the students who are not going to go into high technology, I'm not telling that electrician and plumbing is a low technology. I think my question to the curriculum committee is, is electrician and plumbing are given as options in high school? And thirdly, I know that our financial committee and our Goske and his team have saved our assets, whatever you call it, now 5.1 million, that's good news. But remember that, last year I asked a question. Governor passed a resolution, okay, and NJ Education passed a resolution that we cannot lay off the contractors. We have to pay for the contractors during COVID and everyone. For example, for special education, we pay a high amount for the contractors who came and have come and advised our children, help them. Are those people, contractors, really working, or we are paying them easily? That's my question. And what was the cost saving? Governors passes all this resolution only on school district, but not on municipalities. Municipalities could lay off people and contractors. He offers that on districts, and never gives any crap to our Monroe Township School District, okay? So would like to know if our contractors, are we paying? And if we were not paying, how much the saving was? Thank you.
Mr. Gorski, did you want to?
Yes, first part of this is the Jamesburg actual cost versus budgeted cost, cost per pupil, average daily enrollment. Stay tuned, we're going to have a report on that most likely in March. We do this every year, and we will present all of that information in March. That statute that I referenced before required that all contracted services be paid. That includes tuition and transportation. And they were paid as required last year. There was no savings on that, except for the 35% reduction that was for variable costs that got passed through for transportation. And that was from the Middlesex Ed Service Commission.
And I think Precash was also asking about whether, and he was talking about contractors. I think I was talking about student, teachers perhaps, or people, you know, is everyone who's getting paid, are they working? Is there, and I think Dr. Alva can answer that question. Can you just give us a brief?
Yes, everyone who's getting paid is working, and we've, we've actually, some people are actually working and doing other things besides what they would normally doing, so for, normally be doing. So for example, our Falcon Care staff, because they, they don't have the, the numbers in, we're not having the extended, the early childhood education, the, the wraparound kindergarten piece. So those staff members are actually helping with giving out the lunches. So we, we've utilized staff in different ways because they're available, even though it's not their job. Because they're getting paid.
How about instructional people?
Instructional staff are working.
Okay. I think we have one more. Mr. Pulcinelli.
Betty Sab, please state your name and address for the record.
Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. And I do not need a camera. I listened in on the committee meetings, as I do for the past few years, and I've sat in them also. I'm noticing a trend sometimes when we're speaking about students. Today in particular, there was a comment to the high flyer. I'm a big advocate for special education, and to you, comments like this is just, it's so derogatory and demeaning to those that I guess would be the opposite of high flyers. Today in particular, this comment was used when we were presenting the adelante, I guess, group that's going to be formed. And it almost implied that those that are not high academically probably don't have the same importance. And as you know, I know that, you know, I come up here all the time as a leader of C PAG and speak about special education, and a lot of people say, oh, with her, it's always about special education. The problem is that it's never about special education. And today, it wasn't just derogatory towards special education, it was derogatory towards people who don't speak English as their first language, implying that they couldn't be high flyers. So I'm just employing the board and our administration to kind of take action, maybe do some sensitivity courses, hold people accountable when they refer to students as those students. They say things like high flyers, implying that they're those that I assume would be low flyers according to the person who made the statement, or when we refer to special education as special K. We can't do those things. We cannot have equity for all our students, all our students the same. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pulcinelli, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so Mr. Polari, I'm going to give you the opportunity to tell us how much time you need.
I saw Mr. Cantarella go off for a little bit. Maybe he's already done. Five minutes, five, 10 minutes?
It's, it's five, five minutes?
Five minutes is perfect.
With everybody, and we'll be back?
Yep.
Five minutes. I think I have agreement from the board. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got all of us. When he comes back, hi. Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lehman. We're back in session. Our next item on the agenda is Assistant Superintendent's report, Dr. Adam Lehman, if you will, sir.
Absolutely. I've been doing this since the pandemic started, and I, I'd say every, every meeting, I'm going to continue to do it. Thank you to the teachers, thank you to our parents, thank you to our community. Thank you to the teachers. Thank you to our parents. Thank you to our community. The tech teams, everybody that works in the buildings every day, our transportation department. We are, we're getting through this. There is a light at the end of the tunnel. I think I see it now. We're heading there. I don't know how quickly we're going to get there, but it's there now. And we will get through this. So that's my positive vibes that I'm sending out right now. We had some news the end of last week. Our state assessments have been delayed and that includes NJ S L A. The new start date has been communicated as no assessments before April fifth. They didn't actually give us a start date. They just said nothing before April fifth. They also said that they would continue to update us with any further guidance. And when they do that to us, we will share with you as community members and family members. So you can make plans, but you can be assured that nothing, and that includes D L M assessments, access assessments in NJ S L A. Nothing will occur prior to April fifth. Dr. Alvek and I had the honor of attending our mid academic year STEM honors scientific research presentations today. That is a, and it's, it's an exciting part of what we get to do every year. They do three presentations. They do an introductory kind of proposal. They do mid-year update and then they do a final end of year presentation. This year, the topics ranged from oral hygiene awareness to lyre, that's spelled L Y I R E. It's a Chrome extension that detects misinformation. Applications for augmented reality and plastic waste disposal abatement. So these students develop these projects. In many cases, actually physically create or in the Chrome extension, they developed a Chrome extension that detects misinformation. They connected it to filters and algorithms and it was tremendous. And it's kind of, it's ongoing work. They actually are taking what they learned from that piece because it's kind of already in place and they're expanding it to developing an AI program to help play video games and learn video games. So it's, it's just a great experience to go through. And we spend each, each team does about a twenty, twenty-five minute presentation. And then we as participants get to ask questions and provide some feedback. And then they take that both from the presentation, the proposal piece, this mid-year piece and the end year piece. And they tweak, tweak the research and development. Some other highlights, and I'll go through these kind of quick. These are the, trying to do monthly updates for clubs. So some of the high school clubs. Our National English Honor Society. All members served as guest readers, live and or pre-recorded on Zoom. For Applegarth, Brookside, Oak Tree and Barclaybrook Schools. Those members read either teacher prescribed books that complemented the curriculum. Or some sort of unit that they were teaching. And in some cases, they had an opportunity, those students, to share some of their childhood favorites. Those same members are participating in a senior pen pal program in which they write letters to cheer up the local seniors who've been particularly hard hit and isolated in the pandemic. And the members are also participating in a reading, reading buddies program run by the Monroe Public Library. In this program, the Honor Society students are helping young children with reading stories, reading comprehension and learning vocabulary. We did get a brief update on the national, the Science National Honor Society work, but over the next few weeks, they're scheduling STEM professionals to come talk about their careers and have Q and A sessions. So we have a pharmacist who's all, who's a Monroe Township High School alumni coming in. We have a family physician, a software engineer. We have a biologist, animal scientist, neuroscientist coming in, mechanical engineer, and a family practice physician and YouTuber coming in to engage with the Science National Honor Society students. And then our econ and finance team. They have five teams, total thirty students. They successfully competed in the Wharton High School Challenge, a global investment strategy competition for high school students run by the University of U Penn. And this year there were nearly one thousand teams representing over thirty-five countries competing. So kudos to them. And then finally, a few weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the Monroe Township High School percussion ensemble or Monroe Township Middle School percussion ensemble under the direction of Mr. Yale Snyder, where students performed individual performances on a various assortment of percussion instruments. And as always, our arts department does a phenomenal job. And it was a great opportunity to see these students highlighted and, and perform. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Any quick questions for Mr. Lehman, Dr. Lehman? Miss, go ahead, Rupa.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment. I love the idea of the senior pen pal letters. I think that's wonderful, especially in this time when so many seniors are separated from their families. I think it's such a nice connection that the kids are making with them. So I just want to share that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving along, Dr. Alvek.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to begin this evening with a presentation for our educational support professionals in the district. So I'm going to share my screen. Every year, each school, transportation and district office chooses one support professional to be recognized. So these are this year's recipients. So our educational support professionals for 2021. At Applegarth School, it's Ms. Eva Purcell, paraprofessional. At Barclaybrook School, it's Ms. Janet Hyman, special education paraprofessional. At Brookside School, it's Ms. Roseberry Otero, special education paraprofessional. At Mill Lake School, it's Ms. Chris Carter, our school nurse. At the high school, it's Chips Chipulis, maintenance. Our secretary at Monroe Township Middle School, Teresa Estacquia. At Oak Tree School, our security officer, Mark Jimenez. At Woodland School, our custodian, Sandy Rolanti Hess. At the transportation office, it's Margaret Nesby. And at the district office, it's Ms. Wendy Serby, our benefits coordinator. So congratulations to all of our recipients. It's always a pleasure to go around every year and, and get to share this information, these, these awards with them. You see, they're a little different this year with the masks and the social distancing, but we still wanted to make it special for them. Normally, we would invite them to board meeting. Obviously, we weren't able to do that, but we make sure to do that. I will share that presentation with them and they will also be receiving class at their schools. Um, so one of the focuses that we've had in our district over the last few years has been social emotional learning. It's been an initiative for about three to four years. Several years ago, we did start the whole child committee and it's been a district goal to support all of our students. This past year, the challenges of the pandemic and the virtual hybrid learning have called on us to be more creative and diligent with our social emotional services. And there have been a few questions about some of the things that we're doing. So I, I reached out to the schools, Dr. Patelli, our supervisor of guidance. And our whole child committee, who I meet with regularly, to get some, to, to put together some of the practices that we're doing. So I just, I want to take a few minutes just to share some of these practices with you. And I will put this PowerPoint up on our district website because there's a lot of information. And I'm not going to go through every single thing. You'll see that there are so many things happening within our, within our district. So let me share again. Okay. All right. So this is something that, you know, we're all very proud of that we've, we've, we've worked together. So social emotional learning or S E L, as you'll hear it referred to, is really the process where we're trying to teach our students and our adults how to acquire and apply the skills to have a healthy identity, to manage their emotions, to achieve their goals, showing empathy for others, building supportive relationships and being responsible and making good decisions. The, we follow a lot of the keystones from CASEL, C A S E L. And there's, there is a, a link here that can go to their website that kind of goes through. They're, they're kind of the known entity for social emotional learning. So within the whole child committee, when we started a few years ago, we began each year with setting goals for the committee and what we would work on. And through the years, we've come up with a tiered system. One of the first things we did was create protocols and train specific staff within our district on crisis intervention. So we currently utilize the Columbia screening tool for suicide, for suicide, suicidal screening, suicide ideation. And all of our guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, our student assistance counselor. Some of our administrators are trained in utilizing the Columbia, the Columbia protocol. We worked with George Scott, who is, who is from the New Jersey Lost Coalition. And he has come in and done training, trainings with our staff also to help guide us through that entire process and put our protocols into place. Our guidance counselors have also created small groups and this is based on need and based on their, their students and their school. So different, different schools may have different groups because it's based on what the students need. We've done a lot of professional development and I'll get to that in a little while, but a lot of professional development for our staff on how they can implement these practices within their classrooms, integrate them in. It's not a separate curriculum. It's something that can be done within what they're doing in the classroom. We have bolstered our multi-tiered systems of support, our response to intervention and our intervention and referral services program so that we can support our students. We've provided some parent education and parent resources. When the pandemic started, we have instituted wellness checks. So if a student is not in school, we do a wellness check on them and make sure that we know that they're okay. We have mentoring happening in our schools. We've instituted an S E L survey. We have created, and I just shared it out last week, a new website that has included resources for parents and students. And we've instituted the team collaboration time so that teams have teams of teachers have that chance to have that, those conversations about students on a weekly basis so that we can make sure that everyone is aware if there's any issues or anything that needs to be addressed. We have had several parent evenings over the last couple of years. In particular, this year, we had a, an evening, a virtual evening in, in October with George Scott. And beginning on the, on February twenty-fourth, we will actually be doing Falcon Family Wellness evenings. Right now, it's going to be our Falcon students, Falcon House students at the high school, our Falcon friends are going to actually be presenting some activities for our elementary students. So I'm kind of excited to see how that goes over and I hope parents sign up for that. So if you, if you have children at Barclaybrook, Mill Lake or Oak Tree, those notices will be coming out within the next few days. So you'll see that you can sign up for that. And then the upper elementary will be after that. We've had district goals every year that have focused on the whole child and social emotional learning. And as well as our, each of our schools have had school goals that support the district goal. So social emotional learning skills include resiliency, self-awareness, self-management, what I talked about earlier, fixed and growth mindset. And we have activities that happen throughout our district and throughout our schools to support those, those goals and to support those skills. Our admin strategy supports social emotional learning, our mindfulness practices. We have calming spaces and, and tools within our schools, within classrooms. Mentor texts that our teachers are using in the classrooms to support social emotional learning. Articles reflecting social justice issues and specifically that, those restorative justice practices that are, that the middle school staff have been trained in. Our character education programs in all of our schools. Responsive classroom practices that has the morning meeting where the students get together in the morning and create that, that community within their classroom. Wellness centers, flexible seating, outdoor learning spaces. These are all things that contribute to our social emotional learning. This year, the focus of the whole child committee has been on family support. So as I mentioned a, a few minutes ago, we are, we do have the Falcon Families webpage now that went out to all families. This fire went out to all families last week. And we will begin, we did hold a family appreciation week in November. And we held a family recipe exchange and sing-along in December. And as I mentioned, we're going to be doing the Falcon Friends activities. There are more activities planned, but I'm, I'm going to save those because there's some really cool things coming up this year for all levels of students. Lot of professional development has taken place within our district. More than ninety trainings in the last two and a half years, forty-nine just since March, since we've been dealing with the pandemic. The list is inclusive of synchronous and asynchronous training, so staff can take them at any time. Some of the topics you see on the screen there. And this, the PD is really focused on staff supporting students, staff and their own wellness and how well staff can support their families. There are specific ideas here from each school and some of the activities that they're going through, but I'm not, and I'm not going to read through every single thing, but I encourage you to take a look at this. As I said, I will post this on the, have this posted on the website. There are some great activities that are happening across our district at all of our schools. Applegarth School, they have, actually have a Google Drive. A lot of schools do have a Google Drive where the teachers share all of these ideas with each other so they can pull from it. Barclaybrook, I know one of the student board members earlier reported about the Valentines that the Barclaybrook students were, were creating. So there's a picture of those. And again, the activities that are happening within the school on a regular basis for our students. Brookside School really focusing on the growth mindset and they have a mindset mantra that's posted in the Google classroom each week where the students are learning phrases. Mill Lake School, again, having those practices and sharing them with each other. The guidance counselors really taking a lead here in sharing out a monthly bulletin board that focuses on the concepts and, and giving teachers at, at, at the ready, an activity that they could do with their students in the classroom. At the middle school, the project wisdom is used during the morning announcements, which is really focused on character education. The teen truth was already mentioned by one of our student board members. The guidance department is actually holding weekly virtual games. It's very well attended by middle school students. The, the students really love the game Kahoot. It's a Kahoot game. It's an online game. They, they do, they really enjoy that. So the guidance counselors have those, have, are having those weekly and students can join if they choose. There's a lot of things happening at our high school and really depends on, on classrooms, depending, you know, which classrooms are, are focusing on them. But different activities going on. The guidance counselors are there to support. They, they've created groups to support students. A lot of teachers are incorporating activities within their do now or within their closure to just take a minute to just check in with students and see how they're doing. Those wellness check-ins are so important. You know, we're not able to build those relationships in person if the student's not in school, but it's really important to continue to build those relationships. And by taking those few minutes at the beginning or end of class, it really makes a difference. Oak Tree School, they have a work, they have their overview of their words of the month and the students focus on their words of the month. And they learn about them and what it means each month. And again, our guidance counselors take a really big role in a lot of this and, and with monthly guidance meetings with each of the classroom. Woodland School focuses really on the FISH philosophy, which is really about a positive attitude and making your, you know, choosing the attitude that you're going to have as you go through your day. And each, each class focuses on that and all of the guidance lessons are focused on that FISH philosophy and they're continuing to do that in the school. A lot of their health lessons include mindfulness strategies, yoga lessons. Our guidance counselors, these are some, just some of the activities that our guidance counselors are doing on a regular basis in all of our schools. And I think that's what I have. So again, a lot of information going on. A lot of activities happening throughout the schools. We're continually, continuing to add more to what we're doing as we learn more. And, you know, a lot of things are focused on giving the teachers the tools that they need to be able to incorporate them and integrate them within their lessons. And then we're also trying to share out those resources with parents. So that's been a big focus of our social emotional learning in the district. So I know there were some questions about that. Hopefully that answered some of them. Our hybrid days are continuing in our schools. As of today, we had fifty-six staff members and one hundred and fifty-five students that have tested positive to date. Currently, we have twenty-one staff members and fifty-seven students who are required to quarantine based on exposure or symptoms. We're continuing to monitor all guidance coming from the DOE and make adjustments as necessary. We are still in the orange level of the Cali report. However, last week's report, last Thursday, did show some counties starting to turn to the, to yellow. And I know our, you know, even in our township, our weekly township numbers have seemed to have been going down. Hopefully, we're on that downward trend. And I know our, you know, even in our township, our weekly township numbers have seemed to have been going down. Hopefully, we're on that downward trend where we can start. Looking at possibly opening up school more more days, so we are looking at those possibilities. In the planning stages. On tonight's agenda is a revised restart plan for approval for the board. Some of the changes in there include just updates to the daily screening questionnaires. This is based on updates from the CDC and the Department of Health. And updating to our current hybrid schedules. Than what was originally in there when it was first approved. So moving to tonight's agenda. We do have two staff members who are planning to retire at the end of the school year. Ms. Susanna Sullivan, language arts teacher at the middle school, will be retiring after eighteen and a half years of teaching. Ms. Natalie Michael, grade four teacher at Woodland School, will be retiring after seventeen years of teaching. So I want to thank both of them for their dedication and service to districts of the town and wish them both long and healthy retirement. So that takes me to. The personnel items on the agenda. So it is recommended, Madam Board President, it's recommended that the board approve attached personnel items A, A, H.
So moved.
Second.
A second.
Chrissy Skirby. Any questions for Dr. Alvik? Being none, shall we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Beerman. Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky. Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through A, H has passed.
Okay, just want to quickly say a congratulations to Ms. Maggie Fedora. Who will be the acting principal of Mill Lake School during Ms. McNolly's leave. And to Ms. Kelly Grotrian, who will be the acting assistant principal at Mill Lake and Barclay Brook School during the time that Ms. Fedora is the acting principal. For board action items, it is recommended that the board approve the attached board action items A through O.
So moved again.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Board action items A through O moved by Mr. Polari, seconded by Mr. Tofano. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Madam Board President.
Yes.
Board action items A through O has passed unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Mr. Gorski, would you like to take over?
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through G be approved by consent roll call.
Do I have a?
Second.
Okay, who was first? Okay, I think, yeah.
I think we're getting a little fuzzy here.
Yeah. Mr. Tofano, I believe, was first and Katie Belko was second.
So noted.
Any questions? So this, Mr. Gorski, the only one I have is B, the transfer number six, that we're not talking. Not on. Our agenda yet for the transfer of the five million dollars from that. To. To cover the tax shortfall. There's nothing on our agenda for that tonight, right?
Correct. That's just a cash movement to cover the five million dollars. What we have on the BA report is line item transfers through appropriation accounts.
Just, okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Roll call. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Ms. Arminio, Madam Board President.
Yes.
Board action items A through G has passed. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Board President's report. I think I've spoken enough tonight. But I just wanted to let people know, we are, we are doing some little changes to committee meetings and times. I asked the public to just bear with us. We're trying to make some positive changes if we feel that. The the public is either resistant or it's not working, we'll certainly try to change back. That specifically is we've had to add some extensions to time on committee meetings so we can get. The large number of discussions and information. Through the board and so we can make some good decisions. Let's see. I think, I think that'll be. We've actually discussed just about everything and to Mr. Leskey's comment, again. Making the public form as as soon as possible during a meeting is always on our minds and we'll try to. Keep, keep that in mind and try to make some changes if possible. And I I think that's enough for my report tonight. So we will move then to. Other board business. Do we have any other board business? Oh, Mr. Tofano, go ahead.
Yes, I I'd just like to. Make a statement tonight, and I'm also going to make a motion. Not only as a Board of Ed member, but also as a taxpayer. I was very impressed at Mayor Steve Galena. And his recent actions. Upon his appointment as mayor. He immediately reached out to all members of this board, as far as I know. And, you know, he he basically reached out and. Said to us that we are the movers and shakers of. Of new, of Monroe Township, and he, you know, commended us for our efforts in helping the community. And he also expressed great interest. And concern. Working together with us to better our school system and to to better our community as a whole. Tonight, I'd like to make a motion. To officially invite him. To sit with us during a meeting like this. So we can discuss with him. His new master plan that's approaching. And and its effects that it may have on our school board as with school enrollment. And and. Adding taxes to the community for enrollment and and the schools that we need. And and also have him available to. Have other board members ask him any questions that they may feel pertinent to our development. And and I think he he would be more than willing to sit down with us. As he did extend his his hand and and. Asked to be part of 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 the solution. So I'd like to make a motion tonight that we. Have someone send a request to him to be president our our next month's meeting. Maybe sit through some Q and A and and. And maybe have the public, you know, have him there before the public's. You know, the the public portion of our meeting so that the public can ask him some questions related to school. Issues. And so that's, that's my motion. I'd like to. To have that pass tonight if possible.
Mr. Tofano, can you clarify the motion into? Something that would, we could just put in, you know. As a request and then we'll see.
Yeah, I would like to extend an invitation to. To sit with us at our next board meeting so that we can address issues concerning our system, our school system.
Mr. Gagliardo, do you have a suggestion as to? The language? Unmute, sir. Mr. Gag.
Sorry about that. No, I think the intent is clear. And the only missing element is how the invitation would be extended. My assumption. Is that the motion passes that you would rely on the board secretary to extend that invitation on behalf of board. Obviously, we could draft a letter from you, Madam President. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay, I I think between. Mr. Gorski and I, we can draft a letter. We'll we'll both be party to that letter if that's what you're thinking of, Mr. Tofano.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Gorski, do you want to read that resolution so we can get a first?
Sure.
It is moved by Mr. Tofano. To invite Mayor Delina. To attend the next Board of Education meeting. To discuss issues. Considering master plan, enrollment, taxes and other. And be available to Board of Education member questions. And it's further directed that the board secretary and the board president send a formal invitation. You need a second.
You need a second? Karen Beerman. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like, oh, go ahead.
You can go first. Go ahead. No, Chris, you were first.
I I'm just, how would this take place during the meeting? Would would it just be for the board members to ask questions? Or would we be opening this up to the public as well? That's one question I had and. I don't know if if we would consider maybe doing like a special meeting and, you know, I remember the public was. Very upset in the fall when the meeting with the legislatures got canceled. Could we possibly maybe combine something with the mayor and our legislatures and. Possibly do a special meeting like we were supposed to, like the board was supposed to in the fall?
Well, this was, I would imagine that this is, this motion is about sending an invitation. The scheduling and probably the way the. They would choose. Will be up for a discussion. So my guess is, at this point, we can add. An invitation and then see what. Our invitees are willing to do and how they would like to attend. They may have parameters also. I mean, I don't know that we would want anybody to be here for the whole meeting. I think that would, now maybe a half hour, forty minutes, forty five, you know. Something like that. We probably just, probably should just. Send an invitation and see where. The response is. Mr., is that okay?
Yeah, I I don't think that, I don't think that the details, I mean, you, you know, limitation where you basically require the mayor.
Right.
The public comment. I think those are private discussions you'll wind up probably having with the Madam President and and hammer that out.
Yeah. Okay. And it may not be, well, we'll leave it for next month, but it may be when when there's, when schedule is available. So. We don't know what the schedule, Mr.
I would also caution next month, Madam President, because it's also the budget. Budget meetings, the next two months.
Mr., well, we would have to ask him to amend his resolution then. Someone like to ask, Mr. Tofano, could you amend your resolution to not have it in March?
Perhaps to make it a future meeting?
A few, any, a future meeting, maybe where.
What about the idea of having these, what what Mrs. Skirby referred to, and having it as a special meeting where we invite the legislators and the mayor together? So that maybe the legislators can hear what the mayor has to say about development and building as well. In our town, or builder impact fees or anything that else that's choking the life out of the residents here.
Okay, well, now you're changing the whole resolution.
No, no, I I'm just making a suggestion on how, on the entire board would feel about making a special meeting. You know, I I don't know the answer to.
But we have a first, we have a first and second, we have a resolution. So if you want to amend it, we need to do that.
Well, before I amend it, I I need, like, maybe by a showing hands, those in favor of me amending it to include the legislators. For the following month. I mean. That would be the amendment I would want to make.
Mr. Tofano, would you? Would you consider taking this to the Communications Committee? For them to refine this?
Well, I'll I'll make, I'll make the amendment to have the mayor come the following month, as suggested by Dory and. And as far as the legislators coming. We can probably hold that in next month's communication meeting and discuss that. I mean, I'm not in that committee, but. That can be discussed with them, and then we can always add them to the special meeting if that's what they decide to do. That's fine with me.
Okay, so what's the resolution?
So the resolution is to invite the mayor. For the April meeting, I would believe, yes.
Mr. Gorski, you got, is that okay? You want to read that for?
It's same resolution moved by Mr. Tofano to invite Mayor Delina. To the April Board of Education meeting to discuss the master plan, enrollment taxes, be available to Board of Education members for questions. And Board President and the BA will send a formal invitation.
Okay, so we have a roll call, please.
Before we go to the roll call, Michelle.
Yeah.
This is a totally day and night shift in the board. When I brought this up about the legislators coming last year, that was completely scrutinized over and over again. It didn't go anywhere. However, just the fact that we're making a motion to invite the mayor. You know, because they're independently elected body, we're an independently elected body. But I always felt that we all need to work together. This is a real welcome change in the attitude of this board. From last year to this year, and I really appreciate you guys doing it. In terms of bringing the legislators, I worked approximately six months, without exaggeration, to get them to come and get all the legislators on the same date. So expected that they're going to be here in a month or two. I would cautiously warn you that that may not happen that quickly. It's going to take a lot of time.
Mr. Tofano, quickly.
I would just like to to remind Mr. Polari that everybody on this board, we voted. To have those legislators appear because I I personally thought that Andy's idea was great. Unfortunately, without a vote, the old board president shot down that idea and killed that meeting. So I I think everybody that was on this board at that time, who was still on the board. Can agree a thousand percent that Andy, Andy's idea was great. We should have had the legislators here to answer the questions of the people. And the old board president shot down that idea by himself without a vote. I just want to make that clear for the record.
All right, well, let's, let's move on then to a vote, please.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Madam Board President.
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Tofano passes.
Any other board, new board business? I just, go ahead, Mr. Polari. I'm sorry.
Looks like Mr. Rotsky also has it. I I'll try to make a quick understanding. It's eleven oh four right now. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that the public, especially the. The Sikh community within Monroe Township is extremely upset about the absurd. Statements made when the seventh grade and the eighth grade classes were going on with Zoom. Classes. They feel that the school leadership is not taking hell, are holding responsible for what's going on. I understand that there's a. Case that's ongoing, but I think this is a public outcry to make sure that the perpetrators are not made into victims and the victims are made into perpetrators. Like this board has done in the past. The Sikh community is the fifth largest religious community across the world. And to to take shots at them and belittling them is absolutely unacceptable. For that matter, it doesn't matter whether to seek community, a community person or any other community person. Using the community to put people down is absolutely unwarranted for. And people start making comments about the Attorney General and things like that. You know, we 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 look past it, but it does resonate with the kids. And they come back and and make these statements. So I want to make it sure, make sure that every board member here listens to this. And we want to make this thing public eventually as soon as the case is completed, to make sure that the perpetrators are held. Accountable for their their misconduct. The second thing is that I was approached actually by a. A nonprofit Doctors Association that I'm aware of, who are actually doing free COVID tests. Dr. Alvik, this is probably for you. I'm going to forward that email to you. I asked them to send me an email, which is pretty prop. What they're doing is apparently a lot of schools within the state are looking to actually test the the students and the teachers. Before they're admitted into the school or maybe so that you can make educated, you know, decisions in terms of opening or closing the school. Apparently Newark is doing it, and they gave me a couple of other school names too. They do it free of charge, and typically they set it up in the gymnasium of the schools. of charge, and typically they set it up in the gymnasium of the schools. I know that I, initially I felt that that's probably not the best of things to do for liability issues, but I'm going to leave it up to you and the administration to make the decision, but I want to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
I believe Mr. Nikotinsky said that the status of hiring the attorney is going to be discussed in the closed session, so that's great. The last item that I have is the Jersey City. I posted today about the fight that they're going up against, say, the drop in the S2. We know how the politicians work, wherever they get. I know that we did not, we only got about $632,000 this year, but hoping that when the pandemic goes down and if S2 continues, then we'll get a slightly more aid moving forward. We just got to be very cautious to see who's going to be putting any kind of legislation up to stop S2. I, for myself, I'll follow it as much as possible, but I really ask all the board members to be vigilant, and I may send an email if I see anybody, any legislators moving that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Please keep us informed. Mr. Rotsky.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam President. I wanted to start with just thanking Dr. Lehman and Dr. Alvik for their reports tonight, and the focus that they put on, whether it was the STEM Academy and the group performances and presentations. Always great to hear that and exciting that it's still going on in this virtual world. And then, Dr. Alvik, the focus on the whole child, I think Monroe's done a great job with that, building that. You've done a great job over the last few years. Excuse me. It's so important, and now more than ever. So I think all those activities and school by school, it's just, it's a fantastic thing to see. And I, I, I know firsthand it's helping, at least the high school students. And I know from a lot of friends from other schools that they're feeling very connected, even when they're living in a virtual world. So the whole child checking in on the kids and sort of always wanting to know how they're feeling, what they're doing, it's really been, it's been a testament to the teachers as well. And somebody said earlier that we forget that teachers are heroes, and I think we don't forget that teachers are heroes. And I think they should be appointed, they should get their vaccines, and we should get the schools fully open sooner than later, but we don't get a say in that, unfortunately. But we can keep screaming, and we can keep trying. So they are definitely heroes. If I may speak on one more student topic, because I was sort of just astonished to find out that one of our, a lot of the sports get attention on Twitter, whatever, a bowler rolled a 300 game last week. And I don't, I don't know, I don't think that happens very often, not in my lifetime it didn't. But Anthony Riccadella rolled a 300 last week, and I just thought that deserved a shout out. That's, that's a good kid rolling a great game. So wanted to make mention of that. And then lastly, I will say this, I think we talked about the Jamesburg tuition numbers, will, the audit numbers, we do hope to have for next month's meeting. I will say this to the resident who brought it up with regards to this whole 10% of the high school population number. I'm pretty sure, if I understand the statute correctly, it's if, if the population of the sending district is less than 10%, they don't have to have a representative on the board of that. Doesn't say they can't have a representative on the board of that. So when that day does come, and it will come, I will just say that that'll show, it'll speak volumes to the character of the board that votes, whether or not they choose to still have a board member representative, or they choose not to. I don't know why you wouldn't want to, but again, I'm pretty sure I won't be involved in that vote, and that remains to be seen. So I'm pretty sure it's an optional, not a mandatory situation. So I will leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Very quickly, we are approaching the end of the contract with Mr. Gagliardi's firm, and we have an option for, to continue until March 31st. I think, under the circumstances, and as long as things are taking, we should, we should extend that option. I had a discussion with Mr. Gagliardi this afternoon. I'm going to let him speak briefly, and we will vote on his suggestion, and we'll go from there. And then we'll go into, we have a public forum, and then we'll go into closed session. Mr. Gagliardi, you want to just briefly mention, and we'd like this for the record, almost verbatim, because instead of the resolution, we'll just have an agreement. Go ahead, Mr. Gagliardi.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know that it's going to be that brilliant that you want to write down every word, but the essence of the discussion we were having was that the original proposal was to basically vote every month on extending our firm, because you don't know, A, when you're going to have your in-house attorney, and B, whether it's a special education matter or something, whether there's going to be something you want us to finish. So my suggestion was this, in order for the board to retain as much control over the role of board counsel, that's us, without having to deal with this every month, was that you pass a resolution that extends the contract to June 30. But once you have an in-house attorney, create a mechanism where we're not authorized to do anything unless the board, through the Board President, obviously, between meetings, specifically authorizes us in writing to do it. I think that's the easiest thing for the board to do. Naturally, I'm not going to be sitting there doing legal work that we're not authorized to do. That's just silly. And quite frankly, if I were to do that and bill you for it, you should be paying it anyway. But I just can't imagine the board voting on the same contract month after month. But keep us available, and once you have an in-house lawyer, use us or don't use us as you see fit. I work for you folks anyway, and just thought that was the easiest thing to do. And then the request through the president was, well, you know, in so many words, that makes sense to me, but I'd like you to explain our thinking to the board so that they can understand before they vote on. So I guess technically speaking for the purposes of Mr. Gorsky, it's a motion to extend the contract with the Porzio firm through June 30, subject to specific authorization for the board, from the Board President, as to the services we will provide once in-house counsel has commenced employment.
Okay, got it, Mr. Gorsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody, how, can we have a motion? Katie? Second? Mr. Tofano, anybody want to make a comment before we vote?
I had my first disagreement with Mr. Gagliardi today. However, I'm going to, I think it's an excellent idea, instead of doing this on every month.
Oh, you got the chance to talk to him today, Mr. Polari?
No, no, right here, right here.
Oh, okay.
About the contract language and the bids, so.
Oh, okay. That's, that's okay. Disagreements are good, as long as we learn something from them. Okay, let's have a vote, please, so we can move forward.
Ms. Belko.
Unmute, Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bierman.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Polari.
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky.
Yes.
Ms. Siegel.
Yes.
Ms. Kirby. Mr. Tofano.
Yes.
And Madam Board President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next. Thank you, Mr. Gagliardi. Public.
Thank you, Madam President.
Mr. Paul Sinelli, do we have anyone in the public forum waiting to speak?
Madam President, before we engage members of public queuing, I have three statements that I mentioned before. You want me to read those first?
Oh, yes, go ahead. Just for members of the public, these are things that have been sent in, and according to the new regulations under the emergency COVID situation, that we have to read them in public. So go ahead, Mr. Gorsky. Thank you.
Yes. This is an email received from Andrea Losacco, L-O-S-A-C-C-O. And the statement is as follows, "Board members, please have no illusions about the quality of online learning versus in-person. Monroe Township might be better than some, but that is a very low bar. The children are suffering mental health as well as academic effects that may take years to correct. Our role students are now failing. The science supports getting kids back full-time!" exclamation point. "Demand a plan for a quick, all capital letters, return of all students to a full-day learning!" exclamation point. Andrea Losacco.
Next one.
The next one is from Mr. Stephen Ryback. And Mr. Ryback writes, "This statement can be for the first public forum as a resource to BGT Committee. Stephen Ryback, 23 Riviera Drive. I'd like to thank the board for considering the proposed plan to replace the Applegarth School. As you know, that plan was probably the most popular one being considered by the last Board of Education, but on hold because of the pandemic and economic conditions at the time. It also had the support of Dr. Alvik. A lot of discussion and work went into it, and I think it's a plan that meets the needs of our community. Now, the information you brought back on the Clermont School in Franklin Park looks interesting, but I did note a red flag. The biggest problem there is the HVAC system, which was recommended by their architect. Why would you consider using a firm after clearly making such a costly error in judgment? The firm we used for the high school was spot on. The building came in ahead of schedule and under budget with no structural slash engineering problems." Thank you. And the final one is from Regina Giacomini, G-I-A-C-O-M-I-N-I. And it's as follows, "I would like my questions to be read by Mr. Gorsky and all to be read before any of them are answered. Number one, what is the district going to do to help our special needs population get back everything they have lost during the pandemic? At this point, I don't feel that additional therapy is enough, and want to encourage you to extend ESY to include the full summer. Number two, will the necessary work needed at the middle school, including the roof, be part of the next referendum, and will there be a new ad hoc committee created? And number three, since Mr. Nikotinsky does work through his personal company for the MTEA, doesn't that make him a conflicted board member, meaning he cannot vote on the union contract, nor be a part of the negotiation process? If not, can you please explain why? Thank you, Regina Giacomini."
Let's start with the last one first, Mr. Gagliardi. Do you want to just briefly or should we leave that?
Um, I, I don't, I don't know enough about Mr. Nikotinsky's personal feelings to comment publicly on that. I can if the board wants me to look into it, but I wouldn't be discussing that publicly. Even if I did, I'd be advised to report privately.
Okay, that's that. How about the others? Mr. Gorsky? There were two more.
The others, once again, were, number one, what's going to be done for our special needs population? Her recommendation is to extend ESY to include the full summer.
Dr. Alvik, any comment on that?
We are looking at adjusting what's going to be happening at ESY and continually assessing our students to, to work with all of the students. We are not looking to extend ESY, but we are looking to adjust what happens at ESY.
Okay, and the middle one?
The other remaining question is, will the necessary work needed at the middle school, including the roof, be part of the next referendum, and will there be a new ad hoc committee created?
I don't think there's been any, I'll answer that. I don't think there's been any discussion of a new ad hoc committee. Not, I think the last ad hoc committee had very good recommendations, and I think we have accumulated many recommendations over the many years. I think, and again, I'll talk to my board members, but I think we should really just start moving forward. We, the last ad hoc committee, you know, we had, we have a lot of accumulated things now. Now we even have some other options, such as modulars, this other school. So I think we should really start looking just to move forward, even though we will take, you know, we will take participation from the, from the community. And we really don't know about the middle school until we have to put that, you know, we, we put those details in referendum, and we talked about getting the list of the most important things that need to be done. Would that, would you go with that, Mr. Gorsky?
I have a comment on it.
Okay. I think that'll do it. So now we'll open it up to the public. Mr. Paul Sinelli. Can you tell us first how many people are in the public, waiting in line?
We have six, Madam Board President.
Okay.
Sarah Aziz, please state your name to the board.
Sarah Aziz, 3 Long Slant Drive.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, I was happy to hear that there might be changes in committee assignments. I hope this means that Andy Polari gets reassigned to the BGNT Committee and that Paul Rotsky gets reassigned to the Finance Committee. They both have professional expertise that would be valuable at these committee meetings. This would also reduce the length of the general board meetings, because these board members would have had the opportunity to ask questions and offer insights on the relevant issues at the committee level. I was also shocked and saddened by the racist attack on one of our Sikh students. My heart goes out to the Sikh community, and I hope that the perpetrators are held accountable.
Okay, just a correction. I, I did not say that we were going to change the committees. I said we're changing the times and maybe some of the dates. Okay?
Okay, misunderstood.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. Mr. Paul Sinelli?
Charles DiPiero, please state your name and address for the board, please.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't have, I didn't have my hand raised. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Next.
Tim Yost, please state your name and residence for the board.
I'm not here politicking for anybody. I do want to just basically state that I had the privilege to meet with Dr. Alvik, Dr. Higgins, and our new athletic director, Mr. Downing, last week regarding an issue that's concerning to many Monroe residents with regards to political, political interference amongst possibly board members, possibly political figures even outside regarding sports and clubs. I do just want to ask, Madam President, if in fact, I know you all have received the letter I sent, just basically regarding policy to this. I did speak with Dr. Alvik about it, and she assured me that under her administration, there'll be nothing of this, of its kind. If, in fact, there is a policy, can someone please bring it up for me? I can't find it. I can't find a policy. Now, people, what people see at sports meeting or sports, or sports games or clubs is a lot different what they see here. You know, we have six members now. We had 100 when we began. We got, you know, 30,000 people in the community that know this has been a systemic issue of political and parental interference, okay, for years. Okay, I'm talking from a personal matter as well, but it's got to stop. It's got to stop. Now, with that said, I would like for the board to investigate my letter and my wife's letter that we sent, you know, like some type of resolve to. Madam President, when should I expect some type of resolve to this or some type of answer to this?
Um, I'm sorry, finish.
No, I'm all finished. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Esso, I did receive your, your letter. I take it under advisement. I cannot promise or give you a date and time. I will discuss it with Dr. Alvik and members of the board, and hopefully we'll have some resolve. I don't know the nature of your concern overall, so, but we, the board don't.
I'm able to comment and go with a move whenever you'd like to me. I would like to, my wife and I would like to find some type of resolve in this prior to taking legal action ourselves. You know, and that's, that's really the threat that is basically just telling you, look, it's been two years now, you know, that this, at least two years has been going. It's just been a systemic issue for years in sports, in clubs, even with parents seeing teachers. And it's got to stop. It's got to stop. People see it, and people are getting, and I told Dr. Alvik, Dr. Higgins, and I told ATD, people, people, parents and kids are getting, it's very, they're turned off by even going out for sporting events anymore because of what's going on. Nobody should use a political position or the parental position as an. Nobody should use a political position or parental position as an advancement for their child. And I would like some, I would like some answers, that's all.
Well, the board does have the ability to do investigations. I found the policy, I think it's policy, it might be a bylaw, 0133. I'll be reviewing that with the administration and members of the board. And we'll see, we'll see the resolve on that one.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, board.
Brian Fabiano, please state your name and address for the board.
Brian Fabiano, 19 Patricia Place. Madam President, I would just reference District Policy 141.2, where it talks about board representation, where the law is actually very clear. Under Section 3, it says, "In accordance with the statute that I named before, the sending district shall have no representation on the receiving board of education," blah, 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 right? There's, there's no, there's nothing in the law that gives an option or a choice. The law is pretty clear, so I ask that this board continue to follow the laws as written. I wanted to ask a question about the bus reimbursement to Jamesburg. I understand that Jamesburg probably had already budgeted for the cost of the buses, and it sounds like we gave them a discount because of fuel costs, et cetera. Why didn't we consider applying those, that, those monies to the indebtedness to reduce what they owe us instead of rebating it back? So that maybe perhaps Mr. Korski can shed some light. And I'm just going to bring it up again because I think Dr. Alvik's response to my last question about the event and the schools with racism, I think, was, was a parlay. When something of this magnitude happens in our district, it should not be addressed in a school by a principal. Any district around us who has had similar situations, it always comes from the superintendent, and we need our most senior leader, you, the superintendent, to make it known throughout this district what we stand for as a district, not just one school, as a district. And, you know, we have to be careful to sit here and call, and call whoever is involved perpetrators and use words that perhaps might come back to bite us. Listen, people make mistakes. I'm not sitting here, and I'm not saying that, that they're right for what they did, but these could be kids. And the last thing we want on our hands are kids that can take this the wrong way. We find out that perhaps a suicide takes place or something, you know, you know, very bad happens. So I think we have to be careful with the way we talk about it, but I think something from our most senior leader here, you, Dr. Alvik, needs to come out from a school. This is not a principal, you know, matter that happens at one school level. This is a district, and there are people that are not involved, that don't have kids in the school, but are citizens in this town that want to hear it from the top, that this is not what we stand for. And I would just say this, there are board members sitting here that made public comments when this broke in, in, on Facebook. And, you know, I often see, I'm not speaking as a board member, but, you know, we as parents and we as kids don't get the, or our kids don't get the ability to turn off our titles. Well, we're not speaking as a parent, we're not speaking as a child, right? We don't get that ability. So I think you have to be careful what you say as board members out there, too. You take a, you know, an ethics oath when you come in as a board member, and I think you have to be very careful. There were some really nasty comments and some things that were said, and I'm not going to, you know, pin them to individuals here, you know who you are and what you said. But I think this is something that needs to be dealt with at the leadership level, and we're still waiting for a comment. And I think it is owed to this town and this entire school district. When it happened in East Brunswick eight months ago, a note went out, a press release went out, and it was clear, we need to know what this district stands for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr..
Ms. Arminio?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen references the transportation invoice that I spoke to before and statutory and the authority within my position to negotiate those. This invoice for transportation to Jamesburg is a reimbursement to Monroe for our costs to provide transportation for their students. We're not engaged in a profit generating transportation service here. This is more of a courtesy. And when we're not, we're not incurring fuel or tolls, I don't believe the gentleman is suggesting to create a fictitious invoice to overcharge for those items to then apply back to the tuition area. Certainly, the agreement that's between the two districts references tuition costs and does not at all have language about any other ancillary revenue or items coming into it. So in, in summary, I would not feel comfortable at all putting items in an invoice that we did not incur, charging another school district, and then applying it against an agreement that the districts have that has been working well.
Is there a contract or, or an agreement with just, let's just talk about the transportation, just for clarification? Is there a written agreement regarding transportation and transportation costs?
There never has been because it's a fluid number of students that has to be calculated every month.
Just, just a question. Thank you for the answer.
It is included in the budget, however, though. That figure is disclosed as a revenue item in the budget.
Well, I mean, I, I think people can have legitimate questions, and if, if they don't work out, then it's understandable, and then people just want clarification. Again, it's not as much of a challenge as an inquiry. May I have the next caller, please?
Pradeep Blum, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Pradeep Orje Place on Monroe. I'm continuing my question on the same topic of the discussion. My clear question is, I'm not questioning why you gave some discount to Jamesburg or anything, okay? The clear question is, to the dollar amount, how much saved in the fuel costs or any transportation agreement that we had with our contractors? How many dollar amount, what is the dollar amount that we actually saved? And how much we gave that to Jamesburg? How much we passed on that to Jamesburg? That's my exact same question on the transportation. As Mr. Korski said just now, the revenue item, the, the revenue item that he projects for 2021, that we are getting transportation from Jamesburg is around 190K. But we, at final, we charged 153K or something around, okay? We gave around $30,000 plus discount to them. My strike question, how much we saved for 2019 and 2020 full year on transportation costs? And how much we pass that to Jamesburg in dollar amounts, please? I don't want to hear again the same story that about tolls, fuel, and all those things.
Ms. Arminio, I didn't clearly understand the gentleman's question. I asked that he call me in the office, and I'll be happy to provide him whatever information he needs.
Okay, you know what? We'll try to reach out to him as well and see if we can't get, you know, sometimes. We'll just, we'll just do that, and you and I'll speak, Mr. Korski.
Very good.
Okay. Mr. Malam, hopefully we'll get you an answer. Next, Mr. Paul Sinelli.
Yes, Prab, please state your name for the word. Mr. Prab?
Oh, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, good evening. First of all, you know, we always shocked. I know that it was coming on Sikh, but Sikhs are part of the Indian community, too. And not only when I saw on the Facebook, it was a Monroe entire community, all Monroe community didn't like what happened on the Zoom meeting. So we had to understand whether it is a, because this Zoom meeting, anyone can get in, but how it is manipulated, it is a student or the parent who is involved. I'm open for that. It may be a minority community. I don't know who has done this, and the police is investigating. So let us investigate, and if a student is there, we have to do the counseling and understand why and how, why, why they reacted. So we'll take, I'm sure the leadership in BOE, our president, and all know what to do. So that is my comment. Second, coming to the school funding, you know, Senate President said that, you know, Senate President said that $600 million goes towards this Abbott districts, which are, which don't need this money, they're not using this funding properly. Some of the schools are, they have 25% enrolling, and they are administrative. Consolidation can take place, and he wants this $600 million goes toward the underfunded schools like us. So we should support him, and no way they will block this, too. There is a group of Abbott District legislators who control the Trenton, and our legislators fall in trap with that. So I think we have to educate our legislators also where to react and what action to take, including mayor and all the BOE, and we have to hit. Now, we, we just cannot cry, give us the funding, where the gaps are, and tell them to take the action. So I think we should lobby. I want to know when you all are starting the process because already the budget discussion has started. We have to act on this. And I liked the idea of Peter, you know, you know, Tofano inviting Steve Delina. We don't want to bring the mayor, who's, who's been very candid and nice, to bring him and put him on the seat and ask the questions. It should be interactive meeting between the BOE members and the mayor in a candid way, so we are not putting the mayor on the spot. But I love the idea, calling the mayor, and the public cannot just ask questions to the mayor. It should be questions to both BOE leaders, BOE members, as well as the mayor, how we can come out of this. And coming to the CDC saying that, you know, teachers need not have to be vaccinated, that's not a priority, that is a BS. I was on the CNN, several news experts have come and said that because of the variant, it is important, it is wrong that teachers not taking vaccination, and we are reopening the schools. It is not good, it is not safe for the teachers. And that, you know, we have a lot of teachers who are, you know, 55 and above, and I don't want to see any serious impact on them. And if it does, if that happens, who's responsible, okay? So we have to be very careful how we reopen the schools, you know? I know the psychological impact on the students, so we had to balance out. And our governor, I tell you, has done good job on COVID, but, you know, I tell you, the way they are vaccinating people, oh, boy, that NJ validation, you know, scheduling system is a joke, the call system is a joke, it's all failure, okay? And rapid testing doesn't work, 50% false negative. So be careful, don't introduce rapid testing in the school. I can talk separately on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prab. Next.
That's it, Madam President.
Okay, it's getting late, and some of the board members may need to leave. I don't know. We're going to go into closed session. We'll read a closed session resolution. As long as we have a quorum to, to finish the meeting, that would be great. So let's read the resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 2, 31 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJS A 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and we are to review applications for in-house counsel. And following the closed session, action may be taken. And to discuss, the discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as needed for confidentiality, when confidentiality no longer exists. Generally, the harassment and bullying takes about 15 to 20 minutes, Dr. Alvik?
Probably about 15 minutes, yes.
Okay, I'm afraid that going through the, the applications may take a little longer, and it's almost 12 o'clock. So perhaps we will just quickly review, and so let's try to give it 40.
20 minutes.
Well, 20 minutes? Well, let's say 25 because we're going to have to at least talk about some of it. It's not fair to the applicants to keep them at bay for too long. I don't think we were going to make any significant decisions about this anyway, but let's just go through them very quickly. So let's say 25 minutes before we return. Does that work? Everybody okay? Shall we move into closed session? Motion?
Second.
Okay.
Who was that? Beg your pardon? Remove the motion.
Andy moved it, I seconded it.
Okay. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Madam President, are you going to need me in the executive session?
I don't think, do you want him in the?
H I B.
Okay, and then Mr. Gagliardi, after that, you will be free to go.
Thank you, Madam President, I'll see you on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we are back in session, and.
Second.
We haven't adjourned yet, okay. We are back in session. There is a, a public forum on, on closed session items only. There is no action going to be taken on closed session items. But I do want to notify the public that the board, because of the late time, it's after 12, the board has decided, we briefly spoke about the applications for the in-house council. So we did, we did fulfill that obligation under the closed session. However, we are not, we have not completed our discussion. So we are going to try to post again for the February 22nd meeting. It will also be a closed session item, and probably no action will be taken at that time either. So is there, I, I have to ask, is there any member of the public that's going, that wanted to speak on the closed session item? Mr. Paul Sinelli? I don't see anyone.
Do not see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, seeing none. I would just like to inform the public that the next meeting will be, where am I? Next scheduled meeting will be February 2nd, February 22nd. That's a board meeting primarily as a workshop for the budget, and we will probably go into closed session again to talk about the attorneys. And then after that, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be March 15, 2021. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I thank everyone, everyone's exhausted. Thank you so much for staying with us, and to any members of the public that are still there. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
The meeting is adjourned.